Good evening. And welcome. My name is Paul Alpert. I'm the Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consisted with current state regulations, and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment, except in connection with any hearing that is on this agenda. And I believe the only... We have two public hearings tonight. At 7:20, we have a public hearing with regard to a warrant article to amend the zoning bylaw with regard to the Chestnut Street Business District front setback. And then at 7:45, we have the continued hearing for 1688 Central Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts. So those two items will include public participation. First, we will confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Adam Block.
Present.
Natasha Espada.
Present.
Marty Jacobs.
Present.
And Jean McKnight.
Present.
And of course, I am present. Next, I will introduce the Planning Department and other town staff. Our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Present? Present?
Yes, our Assistant Planning Director, Alex Cle.
I'm here.
And it looks like Alex, you're in charge. You're the only other person here other than Lee from the town staff. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the move meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, unless otherwise noted. Meeting ground rules. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes my introductory statement. It is now 7:20, which is... No, let's handle the first item on our agenda before we get to the public hearing, because this shouldn't take long. This is with regard to a decision for a major project site plan special permit 20-21-03, Needham Nutrition LLC at 9:15 Great Plain Avenue is the petitioner regarding property located at 9:15 Great Plain Avenue. I believe that there was a hearing on this matter at the last meeting where I was not present, and that hearing was chaired by Adam Block. And so I'm going to turn the chair over to Adam to to be the chair for this discussion. Adam, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess at this point, we... Just to review, at the end of our last public hearing, which we had closed, we gave direction to our town planner to prepare an affirmative decision. And I think that decision has been resolved, except there may be an update with respect to any required screening for the dumpster in the rear of the building. So I think what I'd like to do at this time is first turn it over to Lee, who can give us that update.
Sure. I had been hopeful, actually, that we would be able to implement some screening behind those dumpsters consistently. It's what the board has been doing for the last 15 years as it's grabbed site plan approvals, requiring dumpsters to be placed within wooden screens. And so to that end, I sent you some photos of the site. But because the site was tight, I did ask the engineering department to go out and take a look and give me some feedback as to whether or not they thought there was really sufficient space to add a permanent, you know, physical dumpster screen, normally in terms of the fencing that we normally use. And they reported back this morning that they thought it was just too tight. The site didn't have enough space behind the building, and there was not sufficient maneuverability. So they did not recommend, actually, that a permanent fixture be installed. So there are a couple provisions, I think, of a decision that would need to be adjusted to reflect that finding. If you agree with the engineering department, and I think that's really in, I think, Section 1.7, where it's mentioned, 1.4, Section 2.1, and and Section 3.14.
Correct. I concur with that. I think I've attended the site myself. And I arrived at the same conclusions that our town engineer did. So it sounds like you'll omit, you'll strike those references from the decision. There was a question that I saw that the petitioner is required to have three parking stickers.
At least three. It's at least three. They're required to have parking stickers for all their employees that get to the site by a personal automobile and not mass transit, but a minimum of three.
So if I could ask the applicant, are you intending to have a total of three employees at the start?
Yes, something, yeah, between that, yeah.
Okay, so that's fine. And then I think there was one other reference, Lee.
Yes, paragraph, I think the reference in paragraph 3.0 should be to paragraph 320, not 319.
Correct. So does anybody else have any other comments or questions about the decision?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Before I saw the emails and the advice of the Department of Public Works, I had my own thoughts about the prospect of screening. And I certainly agree that a wooden enclosure of the type we often require would not work in that spot. But I did wonder whether along the boundary line of the property, separating the property from the adjacent parking area of if a fence could be erected along that along that side. And that wood screen, that would really do a good job of screening that air, that kind of disposal area. You know, you could still see it from the front, but it's such a narrow backyard that, you know, you really could barely see it. And I wonder if any consideration has been given to that, just a simple fence, it wouldn't be very expensive. The feasibility of that, from your interactions with DPW, Lee, do you think such a fence would be feasible?
I didn't, I didn't speak with them directly about that option. I spoke with them about, you know, traditional enclosure.
So I would, if I could respond to that?
Yes, please.
So if you look at the site plan, you will see that there's a very narrow strip of land that's paved behind the building. There's sort of the wider area that's used for parking and the dumpster, and then there's a much narrower strip of land, which is actually where two of the rear exits are. So if you're in either of those units, including the unit that my client is proposing to be renting, and you want to access the dumpster, if you are coming out of there and there's a fence, even if it starts at the wider part, it's going to make it difficult, very difficult to access the dumpster from the rear of the building. In addition, if you...
Sorry to interrupt you guys. You guys hear any noise in the background?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
So in addition, if you look at that site plan, you'll see that there's a rectangle there that says BH, that's a bulkhead. And the space between the bulkhead and the rear of the property is approximately slightly more than the width of the dumpster. The dumpster has to be facing pickering in order for the truck to drive in, you know, pick it up, flip it over the body of the truck and empty it, and then put it back in place. If you had a fence along there, you're asking this truck driver to maneuver the dumpster into a very narrow space that would have the bulkhead on one side and the fence on the other. And I think you're asking for that fence to be, you know, damaged pretty readily. So that, I think that having a fence there will just make it much more difficult to maneuver in and out of that in and out of that, you know, already fairly constricted space.
I wasn't, I think perhaps I misunderstood. I was not proposing a fence that's right next to the dumpster. More or less as an extension of the adjacent building that juts out. I was proposing it along the property line where the granite curb is.
Oh, I can't hear her, guys.
Can others hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you. I can hear you. But...
But that's what I... You understand, Evans?
You're proposing, as I understand it, you're proposing a fence.
Evans. Adam, seems like you want to say something. Do you want to say something?
First of all, I just wanted to confirm that others could hear me.
Yeah.
Okay, and Adelson, you can hear me, but you're having trouble hearing Jean, is that correct?
It muted off for about a good five seconds, and then it came back.
Okay.
Then she came back.
So for clarity, what Jean is proposing is to put a fence on the, what we think may be the the property boundary between the two properties on that raised cement or granite.
I...
Yes, yes, that's the fence. Yes, that's the location that I'm describing, that if there was a fence there, you would in effect have a very small, a spot next to the bulkhead that would be, which is where the dumpster is now, that would be, have a bulkhead on one side, a fence on the other side. And the width of that space is not much wider than the dumpster itself.
I understand what you're saying. So it's not practical, is what you're...
I think you are asking these large trucks to maneuver into a small space to get a dumpster, to pick up a dumpster and put it back down without damaging the fence. I think that's unlikely.
Okay, I will retract that concern, and I'm glad of having the opportunity to discuss it. Thank you.
Very good. Does anybody else have any other comments about this or any other provision of the decision? Then seeing none, with the changes made, at this point, I'd like a motion to approve the relief requested in the major project site plan special permit 2021-03 in respect of Needham Nutrition LLC, a location at 915 Great Plain Avenue, as the petitioner. Can I please have a motion?
I move that we... Shall I go?
I'll save my question for discussion. Go ahead.
Okay.
I move that we approve a major project site plan review special permit under Section 7.4 of the Needham Zoning Bylaw and a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the Needham Bylaw for retail sales of ice cream, frozen yogurt, and similar products for consumption on or off the premises in the central business district, and a special permit under Section 3.2.2 of the Bylaw for more than one residential building use on a lot. And for a special permit under Section 5.1.1.6 of the Bylaw to waive strict adherence with the requirements of Section 5.1.2 that is required parking, and Section 5.1.3, that is off-street parking requirement with regard to the application of Needham Nutrition LLC for the property at 915 Great Plain Avenue.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Expertly crafted motion, by the way, Jean. Discussion.
My question is just perfunctory, which is, and it's really premature, I suppose, because we're not talking specifically about the decision as written yet, but Evans, have you had a chance to review the decision?
I have. And there were a couple things in it that I had a little bit of concern about, but I went over them with my client, Mr. Perez, and I said, you know, I just want to make sure that you're aware of this portion of the decision and this portion of the decision. And, you know, do we want to bring that up with the board? And Adelson's response was, you know, basically, he wants to be a good corporate citizen. If this is what the board wants, he's willing to go along with it. So we do not have any, other than this dumpster enclosure issue, we do not have any issue with the decision as written.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, did you have any comments or questions? Marty, did you have any other comments or questions?
No, I'm prepared to vote.
Okay, then I called the vote on the motion.
Was there a second?
Yes, Natasha, second, the motion. Thank you. So I called the vote. When I called the vote, when I call your name, please signify your affirmative by aye or negative by nay. Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Natasha Spada.
Hi.
And Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
The chair is aye, that's unanimously decided with Paul abstaining. Go ahead, Jean.
Shall I make a motion with regard to the decision?
Yes, please.
And I move that we adopt the decision dated October 5, 2021, with the changes to the various sections having to do with fencing of the dumpster that were, and enclosure of the dumpster that were discussed at this meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? I will also just say for the record that there is one other reference, which is to the board's remedies at Paragraph 3.20, which Lee has also discussed revising. So Jean, is it fair to say that your motion includes that typo?
Yes, please. My motion would include the correction of a typo in Section 3.
From 3.19 to 3.2. Very good.
Yes, from 3.19 to 3.2 in that reference. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none will come to the vote. Jean.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
The chair is aye with Paul abstaining at 4:0. Thank you very much, everybody. Congratulations, Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody.
We look forward to your healthy drinks.
I look forward to media hanging out with, I want you guys to come, okay?
We'll be there.
We'll be there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Very appreciated. Much appreciated.
Sure. At this point, Mr. Chair, I return the chair back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So it is now 7:36, and the next item on the agenda is a public hearing with regard to a warrant article. It's listed on our agenda as Article 2, an amendment to the zoning bylaw with regard to the Chestnut Street Business District front setback. We had previously sent this to the board of, to the select board for their review and to send back to us for this public hearing. This is a public hearing, and there will be public comment accepted. If there's anybody here who would like to comment on it, we do have, can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice?
A move. Second.
Any discussion? We'll take a vote on that motion. Mr. Block.
Aye.
Mrs. Spada.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Ms. McKnight.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's unanimous. The substance of the article is in your packet and is attached to the legal notice. It's a very short article. It's making two changes. One to, one change to Section 4.4.4 of the Bylaw to amend the to make clear the intention of the phrase "business district" in the Bylaw and a change to the, to the front setback in the Chestnut Street Business District. It had come to our attention through another matter that due to partly due to the ambiguity of the definition of business district in the Bylaw, a determination had been made that in the Chestnut Street Business District, along Chestnut Street, there is currently a 20-foot setback, but along all other streets in that district, there is actually a zero setback requirement. The planning department had thought that because a business, a business district had a 10-foot setback, it applied to the Chestnut Street Business District, and it was determined that that matter, that it did not apply. This is a fairly small district. Practically all of the frontage in this district is along Chestnut Street. There are some small side streets that run from Chestnut Street to the MBTA right-of-way. So it's a fairly narrow section. There is one major street, which is Oak Street. This business district along Oak Street again runs from Chestnut Street to the MBTA tracks, does not cross the tracks. And on the other side of Chestnut Street, I believe there is only one side street that this affects, which is Junction Street. And it looks like the only property that this change would affect is the property that is currently the VFW Hall, which is actually set back a great distance from Junction Street. So this amendment for this section would create a 10-foot setback. I'll open it up to discussion by the board if anybody would like to discuss. Yes, Marty.
In the attempt by the currently rewritten proposal to create a 10-foot setback where there apparently recently, we've discovered that the interpretation by the building inspector is that there's a zero setback along Oak Street and that other area that Paul was talking about. I understand the intent. I understand what we're trying to do. My concern is not so much to make sure that we keep there from being a zero-foot setback, because I could imagine objections to that. So I don't have a real problem with that. What I have a problem with as written is that it's going to go to a 10-foot setback. And I don't believe, without further study, at least, that a 10-foot setback is fully justified, given that one Oak Street owner recently built to eight foot and five feet from the overhang in his building. So I don't, I don't see how we should distinguish between what's just happened with an Oak Street building and requiring everybody to go to a 10-foot setback, at least not without further study. So I'm open to suggestions. I'm looking for a way to keep there from being a zero-foot setback without requiring a 10-foot setback at this point. And how to do that, I'm not sure, but that's what I'm trying to do. Am I clear? I'm not sure I'm clear.
Yes, yes. And if nobody else has any comments, I will address my thoughts to your question, but I'm going to give the other planning board members a chance to speak first, if they would like to.
Our response to Mr. Jacobs. I know that in our downtown, we have a zero setback. And I think that's appropriate, where shops and stores are right there on the sidewalk. Chestnut Street is different. And the side streets of budding Chestnut Street are different. And I did give thought to this when we proposed the 10 feet, and I did think that 10 feet was appropriate. I realize it's arising because of, it came, an ambiguity in our Bylaw came to our attention. But the fact that we have in the past interpreted our Bylaw to require a 10-foot setback and we didn't think there was anything exceptional about that. I'm just convinced that it's a reasonable setback for that location.
So may I just interject a question to Jean? So if that's what we were to do, it would leave the Oak Street property with a lesser setback. And you would just allow that to stand as an exception?
Well, of course, its legal status would be as a prior non-conforming structure. And of course, that would be the result.
And that's okay with you? I mean, if we're looking...
But that...
That's okay with you?
It is.
Okay.
Natasha. I would like to just bang.
Yes, yes, Lee.
I would, I just would like to clarify that this 10-foot setback has been in place for at least 60 years. There was no ambiguity created, if there was an ambiguity created until 1990, when the Chestnut Street Business District was created. This area was previously zoned business, and the entire district had a 10-foot setback that was along Chestnut Street and all the side streets. The change that was made in 1989 was that the setback was increased on Chestnut Street, but it was designed, and the plan called for it to remain at 10 feet throughout the remainder of the district. I think the ambiguity got created as additional districts were added to, were carved out from the original business district, which is what leads us to the situation now. But the practice, the historical practice has been to apply a 10-foot setback across the entire district, except along Chestnut Street, which changed in 1990.
Adam, do you want to say something?
Me? Oh, okay. So can I just, my concern, and I don't disagree with anything that you said, my concern is that this window will, if we do what is proposed here, the window to have built within those 10 feet opened for a short period of time when the building inspector wrote that letter and is going to close at the end of October. And that strikes me as very problematic.
Yeah, I would just like to... Yeah, I, I, I would just like to interject here that if there are any attendees who would like to speak on this issue after the Planning Board members have concluded their discussion, please, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen so that we will, we will know to call on you.
And I would just like to add, there are two phone call-in listeners. And if you want to raise your hand, that way you would press star nine.
Thank you, Alex. Adam?
I just had a question for Marty, I guess. Marty, are you, are you thinking that in an effort to avoid the problem that you've identified to reduce the minimum front setback in paragraph one to five feet and in paragraph two to five feet?
That's one possibility. And now remember, the study that this question needs can happen after this vote. And we can further change this upon further study. Because an objection that we're going to hear at a town meeting, if we go that way, is why five feet? And where's the study? Where's the work to support that? We don't really need that if we keep it at 10 feet. Because that's what we thought it was anyway. But even if we go that way, we could say, let's put it back at 10 feet, which is what we thought it was. And promise to come back to you in the spring with further study and perhaps a proposal. So I, I don't want to foreclose either way, frankly. That I think is my latest thinking.
Any other comments from the Board? So, yes, Natasha.
I mean, I agree with what Jean has been talking, I mean, with, with what Jean said, but I understand Marty saying, is this an opportunity to create a better setback for, it's basically Oak Street and then Junction, right? Those two locations.
There are some other small side streets that have, that, that, that have some commercial businesses on them. I know there's a car, a car auto body shop in there, I believe, and I believe that New Garden Restaurant is in that area. And there.
There are six streets. There's Keith Place, Oak Street, Chestnut Place, Clyde Street, Marsh Road, and Junction Street.
So Marty, what you're saying is, is this an opportunity to revisit that to make sure that the setbacks are advantageous, I guess? Is that what you're saying?
And not inequitable with the owner on extra, on Oak Street, who just was able to, to build within the 10 feet.
But, but I don't think that, I think that there was, you know, an inconsistency that was just found. So I don't think that that was intentional. So that's why I don't think it's inequitable. But if you're looking at opportunities, you know, if you're looking at opportunities for really revisiting it, I understand that. I, I don't think it was intentional.
Whether it's intentional or not really doesn't matter to me. I don't want to get into intentionality. I have no, I doubt it was intentional, but I, I don't want to get into that. It happened. And when everybody thought it was 10-foot setback, it happened. So you know, I think it would be inequitable. But yes, it's an opportunity to revisit the, the whole area too and see if we can do better. I think I mentioned to Lee, she mentioned it's been about since 1989, since this plan was put in place. And one of my reactions was maybe it's time to review the plan.
Yes, Jean.
Before this even came up, this concern about the conflict in different sections of our bylaw that led us to propose this, we have been talking about restudying all of Chestnut Street and Highland Avenue. It's what we anticipate doing over the next few years. And certainly setbacks would be among the issues we would be, we would be studying. Am I mistaken in that regard? I thought we had been talking about a re, a re-study of those areas.
We have been for a number of years, and we haven't really gotten very far with it as, as other issues have, have kept it on the back burner. And might continue, might leave it on the back burner for a few more years.
Except that the hospital is looking at opportunities in that district, which might force that off the back burner and onto a front burner sooner rather than later.
So let me state what I think our options are. First of all, I would like to, you know, we, we, we have the ability tonight at this public hearing to vote to amend this proposed bylaw that we have here for presentation to town meeting. We have the ability to vote to, to withdraw it and just leave things status quo for the time being, which is not lea- leaving things to status quo does not correct what I see as an issue with Section 4.4.4, the definition of the business district or a business district. And it leaves the status quo at a zero setback, except along Chestnut Street, which is a 20-foot setback. So we do have the opportunity to vote to leave it as drafted with, with the 10-foot setback, which is what, what has been, what we thought was the setback requirement all these years, which we feel is the intention of the 1989 zoning bylaw. And we have one building that's a pre-existing non-conforming. The other thing we can do is which Marty had raised at the la, when we discussed this before, which is we, we had a, a an exception to what we thought was the rule, which created a zero setback and what's sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander. So if that's good for this building, it, it should be good for the entire district. And so that would just, in my opinion, the way I'd like to see it happen is that we vote to remove paragraph two and leave paragraph one, so that we at least fix the business district definition issue. And the third thing that we can do is I think we can vote to change 10 feet to five feet. The, the, the building that got the that we were discussing before, that would now be a pre-existing non-conforming if we had it at 10 feet, is actually five feet from the setback. So we would be treating all the other property owners equally to this building if we changed it to five feet. I don't know that we need to spend the time and the energy and the money to do a study on that one issue where we're all that, all that we're doing is we, we thought we had a 10-foot setback. We discovered we have a zero-foot setback. We have a building that is set at a five-foot setback, and we want to be fair to, we want to be fair and equal to all the other property owners. I don't know that there's that much of a difference between a five-foot setback and a 10-foot setback. I think those are our three options. And the fourth option is to leave it at the status quo or make a change and tell, and tell town meeting that we intend to study this and bring it back to town meeting sometime soon. I, again, I don't know that it's worth the energy and the, the expense. I, I think that is something that we should do as we look to change all of the Chestnut Street zoning, as we have been discussing for years, needing to do. So, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm kind of ambivalent. I, I, I would be fine with any of those three decisions by this Board. 10 foot, five foot, zero feet. We make a decision tonight. That's how we present it to town meeting. And I think, I think we can explain any of those decisions. Which is if we have a zero-foot setback, we can, we can vote to to delete paragraph two, explain to town meeting that we wanted to correct this problem with Section 4.4.4. And we're going to leave the status quo at zero feet. I'm comfortable with 10 feet, justifying it as that's what we thought we had all these years. That was the intention in 1989, so we're just going back to what we intended. And we have one building that benefited by the fact that it wasn't adequately set forth in the bylaw. And I think we can justify five feet by saying that we were all in agreement that this building, which does have a five-foot setback after discussion and, and reviewing the map, that we weren't talking about a lot of properties here and the nature of the properties that are here, which are all businesses, perhaps industrial in a way. That to, to have, to have all of the side streets conform to this five-foot setback that this building winds up having is a fair thing to do for the other, for the other lots in the district. And that's how I would present it at town meeting. So I leave it up to, up to the four, the four of you to discuss which, which of those three or four choices, because the fourth choice is to just withdraw, withdraw this altogether. Leave the issue about Section 4.4.4 out there for the time being. It's not something that will probably arise in the future as an issue, or anytime in the near future, we could just withdraw it. Natasha, you had your hand raised.
So, thank you. So I, I don't think we should withdraw. I don't think it should be zero, because you have a 20-foot setback on Chestnut Street. So, so to go from 20 to zero, I think is very strange, tectonically. But I do think that I'm okay with the 10 feet, but if people feel that is inequitable because of what just occurred, I would support the five feet as well. I don't think we should, I don't think we should spend money on a study right now. I think it should be a larger study at another time when we're looking at the entire business district and the downtown.
Oh, let me say that I do, I do have a problem personally with, with one parcel, which is the 7-Eleven building. I would hate to see that I would hate to see a new building right on the corner of Chestnut and Oak, which is a major intersection with a zero-foot setback along Oak Street. I think that that's an issue.
I, I concur.
Yes, Adam.
I have a question and a comment. My question is for Lee. Lee, who would have received notice of hearing?
We, we sent it to all the property owners in the district, Alex, who had fronted on any of these affected streets. And that was not required by law. By law, we were required to put it in the paper, which we did, of course. It went to all the abutting towns and the appropriate state agencies. And it was, it also went out to the property owners who, who front on these streets.
So that's helpful. And do we know if there's anyone from the attendees that it's, that's from the immediate area that wants to speak to?
Adam, I am not seeing any hands raised. I have zero hands raised in the list of attendees.
So I think I'm inclined, as Natasha is, you know, to proceed with 10 feet. But if it's the will of the Board to adjust to five feet, and that's an, and that's a solution that I, I would accept that too.
If I, if I may comment on the difference between five and 10 feet. These streets are relatively narrow. I, I think Oak Street is perhaps wider than the other streets that we're speaking of. And to have just the air of, of the setback at 10 feet as compared with five feet or certainly zero feet, I think is, is better for these streets. If, if, if it's time to make a motion, I move that we.
Jean, I think, I think I have to first open it up to the public, even, even though I don't see hands raised. I think I, I need to give, give public comment a chance. We ready to do that, Jean?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So I now ask if there is anybody among the attendees who would like to speak on this matter? And I'm not seeing. I just raised my own hand. My mistake. Hit the wrong button. Oh, I see a hand raised by David Levy. Alex, if you could move David Levy as a participant so that he can speak to this?
I believe she's moving him. It just takes a couple minutes for it to populate.
Okay, then I just want to, if there's anybody else among the attendees or the phone callers who would like to speak, please use raise hand function.
He didn't come over. I don't, and his hand isn't raised. I'm going to try it one more time and then maybe he opted not to.
Well, he's in.
Okay.
Mr. Levy, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. Um, David Levy, I have a property at 20 Freeman Place.
Great, thank you.
And just listening to the dialogue, I'm more inclined to say I'm hearing that you're planning a study to make some changing on setbacks. And you're talking about bringing it from 10 to five feet without a study. And doing something without a study, I don't think it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It doesn't affect me at all. But just listening to this, I'm more inclined to say leave it as is. You're planning on doing something. It's not affecting anyone. I agree with you, maybe on the 7-Eleven building, but other than that, I don't think to make a change for the sake of making a change is going to benefit anyone.
Well, I, I, I would like to ask you what you mean by not making a change. Everybody thought it was 10 feet for all these years.
Correct.
Then we discovered that that because of the issue with this building on Oak Street, a close examination of the bylaw revealed that the proper interpretation of the bylaw is that it's currently zero feet. So are you suggesting that we should leave it at zero feet? Or are you suggesting that we should go back to the 10 feet that we thought that it was all these years?
I personally would not have a problem at zero feet at this point. Because from what I heard, you're planning on making a study down the road and changing the setbacks anyway.
Well, we're going to study it. We don't know what we're going to do. We're going to study it first.
Correct, correct.
So when you say change it anyway, we don't know that.
And furthermore, between now and then, you know, it, another building could come in and have a zero-foot setback. For instance, at the corner of Oak and, uh, Oak and Chestnut. Which is something that I think we would prefer not to have. Then there's never to have a zero-foot setback. The intention was to have some setback here.
Then I think, then I think I could, you know, I would agree with changing it the way for the 10 foot, but to change it from 10 to five without any deliberation on why, I'm not sure. I would leave it at 10. deliberation on why, I'm not sure. I would leave it at ten.
Okay, so you would leave it as drafted and presented to town meeting to make it to ten feet that, that historically we thought we had.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Anything else you'd like to, like to say?
No, thank you.
Great. But thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Let me see if there are any other hands raised. I do not see any other hands raised. Alex, can you confirm that you're not seeing any other hands raised?
I don't either.
Okay.
Yeah, I move that we close this hearing.
Second.
Well, if we just close, are we, do we take a vote before we close the hearing on any change we want to make? No? We do that after we close the hearing? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. I'll call the roll. Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Spata?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The hearing is closed. Do we want to vote on our recommendation for this article or discuss that at a future, future meeting?
You need to do it, you need to do it tonight, because we're going to the SLUP next week and the finance committee tomorrow. And we, I have to put in a warrant.
Well, I, I move that we recommend a meeting approve the amendment to the zoning bylaw for the Chestnut Street Business District front setback as presented.
Second.
Hey, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's call the roll. I've been doing it alphabetically. I'll continue to do that. Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Spata?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Nay.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is four to one. Okay. I think we're done with this. It's eight oh nine. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing, the continued public hearing for sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue.
Mr. Chair, I will recuse myself and I will return after, after this hearing.
Thank you. We'll miss you. Okay, the participants in this hearing. We have with us tonight Evans Huber, the attorney for the petitioner. Ms. Pat Day, the operator of the proposed tenant in Needham Children's Center. Suzanne, I don't have a last name listed here. Who was a director for the Needham Children's Center. I don't, do I see Suzanne? Oh, yes, there's Suzanne. John Glossa from Glossa Engineering. John Diaz from GPI. Mark losing the architect for the petitioner.
Oh, he's not present.
He's not, is, is he not going to be here? Because I did see him among the attendees. Is he not going to be a participant?
He's not going to be a participant. That, that may just have been an old, an old list.
Okay. So ignore, ignore my stating that Mark losing is a participant. He is not going to be a participant. It looks like I have named everybody.
Except Mr. Gillen, who is.
Mr. Gillen.
Oh, sorry.
There he is, yeah. Okay. So Mr. Huber, you want to summarize where we are at this point?
Sure, thank you. So we've had some, some substantive discussion about issues relating to our application, but there's been a lot of discussion about issues that, in my view, we should not be spending time on, most particularly this issue about the allegations of ethical violations. I had, I wrote the board a letter last week setting forth our position, position on that. And it is my sincere hope that the board agrees with, with the position that I set forth in that letter, which is, in essence, that this board is not the appropriate venue to be discussing the merits of those allegations or considering delaying the application or the, the public hearing process while those allegations are addressed in some other form. There is a remedy that is potentially applicable if a lot of things happen, including that there's ultimately deemed to be a violation. There's deemed to be a violation that, you know, substantially affects the relief that is granted by the board and so forth. But I, I don't want to spend a lot of time discussing this because my position is that we should not be spending a lot of time discussing it for the reasons set forth in my letter. We did start to have some substantive discussion about some of the issues relating to our application. Mr. Glossa spoke to some of the engineering issues at the last hearing and I think basically from the back and forth process that was employed by the town's peer reviewer, Mr. Diaz. You know, he had written a set of comments. We had responded. Mr. Diaz had responded to our responses and I know that you're, you're, it's your intention to hear from him directly. Of course, that's obviously appropriate, but my understanding is that with respect to the engineering portion of his comments, the only real open issue had to do with drainage at the entrance to the site down near Central Avenue. Mr. Glossa has redesigned the drainage in that location. There's been so much back and forth that at this point I am not sure whether Mr. Diaz has seen that redesign of the drainage system down near Central Avenue. But with respect to that and a couple of other issues, to the extent we can't get it resolved tonight, my suggestion and request of the board is that for things like that, you know, there's going to, obviously there's going to be conditions to this permit if and when it's granted and that things of that nature can be resolved through conditions such as, in this instance, to the extent it's not fully resolved, that, that issue, you know, will be resolved to the satisfaction of the town's peer reviewer, you know, something along those lines. Rather than continuing to have, you know, engineering drawings submitted and then Mr. Diaz has to have an opportunity to review them and then there's some back and forth. And, you know, the hearing gets delayed another month. So but, but other than, it's my understanding from reviewing Mr. Diaz's set of comments that relate to engineering issues, that that was really the only sort of open item or item that hadn't been fully addressed as of the date of the last back and forth correspondence. We didn't get a chance yet to talk about traffic, which I know is a hot button issue. And, you know, we're gonna have Mr. Gillen speak about that. Mr. Diaz is gonna speak about that. But before we get to those substantive issues, there's a couple of other things that I want to just sort of lay on the table because they're, they're very important to the applicant and I, I don't want them to get lost in discussion of other issues. The first one that I want to bring to the board's attention is this issue about the barn. There's been a lot of discussion about the barn. Should it be moved? Should it be taken down? And and I, I want to state very clearly where we have landed on this. We might, my client, the applicant and I have landed on this, which is that we feel it's very clear that as long as we are using the barn for purposes, solely for purposes relating to the childcare facility, that the barn is a protected structure under chapter forty-eight, section three, and that this board does not have the authority to require us to take the barn down because that would, in effect, be denying a permit to use the barn for that purpose. And I think that is expressly prohibited by chapter forty-eight, section three. I would also say that with respect to the barn, there's, I've heard a lot of rumors and innuendos and theories about, you know, what's the barn going to be used for? And I would like to try to address those as clearly as I can right now. It is true, and I will acknowledge that originally when we submitted this application, we anticipated using a portion of the barn for storage and a portion of the barn for other uses, including Mr., my client, Mr. Barelli's personal use to store automobiles and, you know, boats and stuff in there. That, it has been brought to our attention through one of these submissions by an opponent of this project that the town does not allow more than one non-residential use on a lot in this district. That is true. And so using the barn for two purposes, one relating to the childcare facility and one related to something else is real, is, it is correct that it is not allowed. That is a, you know, that is a, a fact of what the bylaw requires. And so we've had to adjust our plans for the barn. And, you know, perhaps that's something I should have picked up on sooner, but in any event, I acknowledge that what we are now saying is different than what we were originally saying. We were originally saying that we were going to use it partially for the childcare facility. We are now saying because of that provision of the bylaw, that we will be using it solely for purposes relating to the childcare facility. To the extent that there are concerns or theories or rumors that my client has some other plan in mind for this building, it seems to me that there's a very simple solution to that, which is that this board, again, when it issues, if and when it issues a permit, can place various conditions. One of the conditions would quite obviously be that the barn cannot be used for any purpose other than those related to the childcare facility. And so, you know, to the extent that people are concerned that this is, you know, the camel's nose in the tent and that really the intent is to later put more classrooms in there and have more children and so forth. Again, it seems to me that this can be readily addressed with a condition that we have voluntarily told the board we are prepared to agree to, which is a maximum of a hundred and fifteen children at this location.
Could I just ask a question, Evans? I just wanna, I, I'm not concerned about the rumors. The question has nothing to do with the rumors. I'd just like to have the date on record as to when you conceded to the planning board that that's your current position, that will be your final position, which is that the barn is going to be used only for storage for the childcare center. When did you adopt that position before our board? Was that September?
I would say that, that, that the last hearing, I know I stated that at the last hearing. Whether I stated it in any position before that, I don't know.
Okay. And the last hearing was in September, I believe, right?
Early September, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So but I know, I, or I believe that, you know, one of the reasons there's a suspicion and distrust is that our description of what we intend to use the barn for has changed. It has changed. I acknowledge that. I think maybe I'm the person who should take responsibility for that. Maybe I should have advised my client sooner that if he wants to use it for healthcare purposes, that, that, that is the only thing that he can use it for and not for, you know, partially for some other purpose. So that's all I can say about that. But we, we do recognize the validity of the argument only allows, does not allow more than one non-residential use on a lot in this district. So but I also want to be very clear because it has been suggested by various opponents of this project that, you know, we can, we should take the barn down. We should be required to take the barn down and so forth. We do not agree with that. We are not willing to take the barn down. If it comes to it, I think we are going to be in a situation where the board is going to need to vote on the application as we have presented it to the board and the board's gonna have to make a decision. Are they gonna, you know, vote up or down on that? But that's, we have, we have made various modifications to the plan over the, over the past six or seven months. And, and we are, I, I do not want there to be any mistake that, you know, we're, we would be open to revising the plan yet again and taking the barn down. The only other thing that I want to draw the board's attention to before we talk about substantive issues such as traffic is that I don't know, there's, you know, the board has a ton of paper in front of it. The file on this case keeps growing. It's probably well over five hundred pages at this point.
A thousand.
Is it really?
Yep.
And so I, I know what a massive amount of material that, that has been submitted to the board. And it's, any particular item is, it's easy to get lost in all that paper. I do want the board, to the extent you're not already aware of it, to draw your attention to the fact that in the past week or ten days, there have been a substantial number of letters and emails that have come in in support of this proposal. And, you know, some of them are, are of the variety of, you know, my child went to Needham Children's Center and I think it's an extremely well-run organization and I support this. Others, I think, are more specifically addressed to some of the issues that, and I'm not saying that, that that's an inappropriate comment at all. I think it's certainly an expression of the public will in this town, which is something that I think the board, you know, can and should take into account. But more specifically on the issues that the board is considering, like traffic and, you know, the possibility of traffic spilling out onto Central Avenue and so forth. I think I noticed as I was going through those comments, two threads that appeared more than once. One of those is that some of the, some of the people writing these letters would make comments to the effect, and I'm paraphrasing now, that they, you know, that, that drop offs at the current location do not occur all at once because these are not, these are not schoolchildren who are attending, you know, classes that all began at the same time. The, this is a, a childcare facility. Children come at different times. And depending on the needs of their parents, for example, and that the experience of the people writing these letters is that there has never been a problem, even at the, even at a site like the Baptist Church, which is not nearly as well-designed for pickup and drop off as, as what we are proposing. So that's a comment that I, I want the board to be aware of. And the other is that there's, there's been a thread in some of these about how much professionalism and effort the staff of Needham's Children, Needham Children's Center has put into responding to concerns about COVID and concerns about, you know, being a respectful neighbor. And that I think that that is relevant to the fact that, you know, there are, there are concerns here about, again, for example, about traffic spilling out onto Central Avenue. And, you know, one of the things that we've said and Mr. Gillen is, is gonna say, and I think Mr. Diaz will agree, is that we've done a fairly careful analysis of what we think is going to be the queuing. Even during peak hours, our analysis shows that the cars will not spill out onto Central Avenue, but you'll also hear Ms. Day sort of reconfirm that if, if for any reason, it turns out that the traffic is backing up or, or queuing is backing up more than we expect, that she will adjust her pickup and drop off schedules in order to prevent that. And I think that the, the, the comments of people who have seen her in action, for lack of a better term, parents who have brought their children to her school attest to the fact that when she says things like that, it's a credible thing for her to say. So those are my kind of general sort of preliminary comments. With that, if it's acceptable to the board, I'd like to sort of move to the traffic part of, of this discussion.
Okay, be, before we do that, Mr. Huber, I probably should have made these comments that I'm going to make before I called on you, but I'd like to. And this is more procedural, I think. First, as, as I had done at prior hearings on this, I, I would, I intend to put a hard stop on tonight's discussion. I was planning on ten thirty. It's already. I was planning on ten thirty, it's already eight twenty-six, um, I'm, we do have other things that the board has to discuss after we, um, finish talking about this. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna look at my watch at ten thirty and see where we are. Um, I may go to ten forty, but I definitely want to put a hard stop at ten forty tonight and possibly ten thirty, depending on where we are. Um, we need to get all of the traffic issues in front of us. Um, I believe that you're s- that you're proposing that the drainage issues are something that we don't need to discuss tonight. We can, we, we can deal with that through the decision for a future, uh, resolution. Um, I do want to give the board members full opportunity to raise their issues and questions. I do want to give the participants who have, who have questions and comments, um, full or as much opportunity to speak, um, and get all of their concerns out into the record. So, um, uh, we're gonna put a hard stop at ten, in, in the ten thirty to ten forty range and, uh, we may need to continue to the meeting, uh, in two weeks. Um, I just want to bring us up to date on the ethics issue, on where we are. Um, we, our town council had given us an opinion, which various people questioned his ability to do that, questioned his potential or appearance of conflict of interest to do that, stating that, uh, basically the position that you had, which is that this board should proceed, uh, without regard to, to the ethics issues that were raised. So town council, um, sent a letter to the State Ethics Commission, um, asking them about the authority, uh, and requirements of this board with regard to the ethics issues. We did get a response from the State Ethics Commission. Um, I'm going to summarize as best I can my understanding of that response. Um, uh, and I believe that my summary is, is correct, but you know, it, it's, um, that response is now, uh, on the town website. People are free to read it and disagree with my interpretation, but my interpretation is that they stated, number one, that they deal only with issues under chapter two sixty-eight A of the Massachusetts General Laws. And if it's not in chapter two sixty-eight A, if there are requirements elsewhere in the law, they're not gonna speak to it. And there may or may not be other, o- other laws that impose some requirement on us, but they don't know, you know, they didn't raise any, they just said they're only gonna speak to chapter two sixty-eight A and there's no- nothing in chapter two sixty-eight A that, um, deals with the authority or the requirements of the planning board with regard to, um, uh, the ethics issues. And so as far as two sixty-eight A is concerned, we should just proceed as we decide to proceed. They then spent some time in their letter, um, making sure that the board members understand that we are subject to chapter two sixty-eight A and we should conduct ourselves accordingly. That's fine. They have, they had, they had the right to do that. Um, and so, um, I, I believe all four of us have been conducting ourselves pursuant to chapter two sixty-eight A. I don't think that's an issue. Uh, so that's where that is. Um, l- let me f- finish on this. Um, we also asked Mr. Heap to, um, I'm, I'm sorry. We asked the town to hire independent counsel to give an opinion from, from another attorney, which we have done. We have not gotten a response yet. Um, we hope to have a response soon, but we don't have a response yet from that. So that's where we are on the ethics issues. Um, I don't want to discuss the barn now. We will discuss that at the appropriate time. I do want to move on to the traffic issues. Um, oh, all those communications that we have received in the past few weeks. My recollection is that they all were with regard to, um, members of the town who were in support of the, um, of the Needham Children's Center. And this petition, I want to thank everybody for writing. I think that this is, this has been a fabulous opportunity for townspeople, wh- whether whichever side they're on, to participate in this civic endeavor. They've all done so admirably, with very few exceptions. They've done so very civilly. Um, I have not had an opportunity to really read them all. As Marty said, there are more than a thousand pages. I intend to go through everything again be- before I reach my conclusions. Uh, I just want to thank everybody in town for participating and giving this board all that, all of their feedback. Uh, and, and in doing so in a, in an admirable way. I wanted to put that on the record. Um, with that, I'm ready to turn this back over to you, Mr. Huber.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not gonna violate my own request and, and get in the last word on the ethics issue. We're just gonna move on.
Good.
Um, so, um, what I'd like to do is, um, ask Mr. Gillen to comment about, in a sort of a summary fashion, because we really would like to move this along. Um, and I think in some ways it may be better, rather than having him give a long presentation to, um, sort of hit the highlights of what his analysis showed, which really goes to the issues of queuing slash potential for backup onto Central Avenue and then traffic impact. Um, and then, you know, my hope or expectation would be that the next appropriate thing would be for Mr. Diaz to comment, he's, you know, I don't control him, but for him to comment on what does he think about these various traffic issues. Um, so that's, that's what we'd like to do. And to the extent that there are specific questions, you know, rather than try to anticipate them in a long presentation, we will just wait for those questions. So with that, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Gillen to speak briefly to the issues of, uh, what his analysis showed in terms of queuing slash backup or the potential for backup and what his analysis showed with respect to traffic on Central Avenue. So John, if you could go ahead, please.
Mr. Huber, Jack Gillan, uh, Gillan Associates Traffic Engineering. Uh, uh, I, I've heard you say keep it brief about eight times. I'm gonna try to do that. There were a lot of assumptions that, that we had gone over that, that led to some of our conclusions. And I was prepared to go through some of those, those, uh, assumptions regarding the, the number of children and how they are scheduled and also the, the, uh, drop-off and, and, and the, uh, the pickup periods and the procedures. Uh, but I'm not gonna do that. I, I will say that we've already heard from, from Pat and, and how she intends to run the program. And, um, I'm, I'm aware of another, uh, childcare facility that's going through this in another town. And, and what I heard the opponent say at that point was that there's a new software out now, it's called Fetch Kids, where the, they, uh, use their mobile phone to be in touch with the school and the school tells them, this was your schedule period, you can come in now. Uh, we run a little bit late, can you come in, you know, at, at ten forty and, at, at three forty instead of three thirty? I'm not gonna get into that, other than that it's not a straight random arrival as ITE, distance transportation is. Uh, a lot of their criteria assumes a random arrival and a random departure without the specific, uh, schedules that, that Pat has instituted in the past. When she started to, it was beginning to COVID out of necessity and, and that had continued to, to the way she operates today. And that will continue here as well because it works better on-site where there won't be, uh, clogging and circulation problems and there won't be queuing back onto the, the, the town public streets. And, and I hope, uh, that y'all agree with this. But I will get into some of the more specifics like you had asked me to do regarding the queuing and stacking. And, and I did write down some footso, I don't forget that, so I'd like to do that now. And pretty much say that the, uh, the analysis, uh, that we had used on the, uh, drop-offs or pickups, the queuing and how it would occur was based on the poison distribution of random arrivals. And we used a sixty-second, uh, drop-off interval, in other words, a twelve, when a parent pulls up, stops the car, the child is taken out of the car seat by the staff member, not the parent, but the staff member will open, reach in, get the, uh, backpack or the bag or whatever else the child's supposed to be bringing into the building. They will obtain that and they will take the child out of the car seat and say the quick goodbyes. And then, and, uh, that, that was, uh, 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 decided to be about a, a, a full minute for just taking child out of a car and, and bringing them in. We had times that were a lot less than that during the summer, but the one I observed at Quincy was a lot less than that. But the child had a T-shirt on, a pair of shorts, so it wasn't as long. But, but, uh, everybody felt comfortable with the sixty minutes to just reach in, grab the child and pull the child out. That staff member would bring the child into the school and not get the child settled, but just give it to another staff member, we will do all of that. And she would run back, uh, he, back to the guy, the next guy and, and do the same all over again. So that's, uh, what we had done with based on the, the, uh, poison distribution. And, uh, for the peak arrivals, we used the eighty-minute, uh, operator schedule with one percent of the parents arriving during that eighty percent, eighty-minute period and a maximum of six stopping of vehicles would be arriving during the same period. And then our valuation proposed that with these assumptions and, and the, uh, poison distributions, that there would not be a queue of more than seven vehicles in that drop-off. The third lane that we had, uh, added and, and discussed at the last meeting in September eighth, I believe it was. And, uh, and even with the ITE, uh, assumption of the fifty-eight vehicles, uh, we still are very confident that, um, where we have the thirty parking spaces and the drop-off lane can accommodate ten vehicles. And then the distance between, uh, Central Avenue to the back of the site with the additional parking, as you get another nineteen vehicles in there. But even with that capacity, we don't anticipate needing, uh, uh, any of that at all. And, and that we don't think it's gonna over, I was back up more than about seven. With respect to the, uh, stacking or queuing during the afternoon, given the expected volume with the parents to pick up windows, over two and a half hours. And, and the number of guys that can be expected to arrive during any one hour is actually less than the morning or queuing that we had, uh, and analyzed earlier further depth. And I'm not gonna bore you with going through all of the assumptions, all of what we had done. We, we, uh, hopefully had done enough to, uh, to show the town what we're doing and why and how. And obviously we're open to, uh, having those as part of our, our, uh, conditions. Uh, the maximum in the afternoon, we'd be no later than that in the morning. Um, the effective operations on like the, the site traffic is, uh, I'm not gonna go through all of the, uh, Central Avenue does carry, but they carried about sixteen thousand vehicles per day and, and, uh, now for the, for the two thousand twenty-two, we assume it's up more like around, uh, thirteen thousand, uh, yeah, thirteen hundred sixty vehicles, uh, uh, during that morning peak hour. Uh, and the, uh, that means that the, uh, traffic can be accommodated. We also noticed the level of service on the southbound, uh, direction. When we had put the table together in the report, we did list the through movement for the southbound separately than the left turn into the site. The reason we did that is because the, uh, software, the, the syncro software, that spits out those two different qual-, uh, uh, criteria, the, the timings. Uh, but I didn't realize that it obviously is confusing to me, it's more reading the report because how can you have a through movement operate at an A level of service when the left turn out of the same lane operates at a B? Obviously you can't. You know, even though it spit it out, we wrote it down, we probably should have said underneath that, that, uh, since the left turn in, uh, occurs in the same through lane, that both movements will operate at a B, doesn't Bob level the service? Well, it's interesting though, when we put the syncro, uh, 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 criteria together, we did call it one lane, it just when it spit it out, it separated those two movements out. But we agreed with the, with the, uh, review with that. It, it's a B level of service in the southbound direction and the, the northbound's pretty much unrestricted. So that, that, that's, that there's nothing stopping the northbound from going straight past the site. And the driveway itself, it, it operates pretty much at capacity in the morning and, and at a, uh, a, a lower, they had a better C level of service in the afternoon. One of the reasons for that is because when they come out in the afternoon, a lot of that traffic is turning right back into, uh, Needham Center where we, where our current clientele is for the most part. And since it's not operating with, with opposing traffic, it's, it's able to much, uh, to, uh, move much more freely into that, um. The, uh, southbound left turn that we just mentioned, that, that's about a, a thirteen-second delay. And, uh, the Central Avenue, uh, uh, intersection of Charles River Street, that's operating as a, 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 a very poor level of service. And, and it, it does that, uh, whether we're looking at the maximum time for each of the movements or if we use the splits that I'm in the machine out there now. Uh, I, I, I have to, uh, apologize. We did a, a response to one of the peer reviews, uh, to, to John's, the peer review GPI. He had, uh, a comment, you know, and, and we looked at those splits and we did put those splits in the traffic where syncro program. And, and we did run that analysis. You don't have the privilege of having it with you tonight because somewhere along the line it didn't get, uh, set in. But we, I am prepared to discuss it real briefly and hopefully John will get a chance to take a look at it in the near future. But the bottom line was that using those, those splits, uh, in the clearances, the three-second yellow and the, and the, in the, uh, the two-second all red, you still end up with an F level of service in the morning. I'm sorry, uh, under the, uh, the evening build conditions. And the southbound movement is also at an F level of service during that same period using those splits. What we did, uh, at, at John's request is, is we also let the software pick the optimum cycle length and also pick the optimum splits. And he hasn't had a chance to look at that as yet, but I will say it worked much better than it does out there now. I remember the first time I looked at the intersection, knowing what the volumes were from the towns, uh, that DPDW that first does. And looking at the lanes throughout there, I couldn't understand why it was, uh, uh, we're, uh, uh, having such delay and, and such queues. But, uh, we, we found that if, uh, the, uh, the splits and, and the cycle length were changed, we'd get a Diaz and Donald level of service during the, uh, evening peak hour as the overall intersection and also all the southbound movement on, uh, on, on Central Avenue. Uh, and, and, and that'd be more like a forty-eight, uh, second delay, uh, on, 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 in the southbound direction. So that'd be a, and, and, and that'd be a big improvement. And I know that, uh, my, uh, my, my boss, but that my client would like to talk to the town about, uh, you know, roughly, uh, where we go from here. But, uh, hopefully John will get a chance to take a look at that. I think this is where, this is where the nut is regarding traffic. And, you know, what can we do to improve that operation of that signal so that the queues get shorter, the lanes get shorter? And in fact, we mitigate, if you will, the additional traffic that we would be pulling in off of that street. I'm not gonna go one alone. We can, I can elaborate on this a lot further, but, uh, uh, for an overall view of traffic, that's pretty much it.
So, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, I think there's a few, um, details here that, um, I'd like to just sort of, uh, fill in some of the gaps that may have been left out in what Mr. Gillen just said. Um, so one of the things that I, I'm sure the board i- is interested in, um, in terms of how did we come up with our analysis and what numbers that, that Mr. uh, Gillen did not specifically tell you, um, and there- And there is, again, so much paper here that I am not sure whether what I'm about to say is somewhere in the paper record or not. But I I, because I'm not sure that it is, I I want to just bring these facts to the board's attention. Our analysis is based on the way Ms. Day intends to operate this facility, and that would be as follows. As I said, as I have said, a maximum of one hundred and fifteen children. The total maximum staff is not the same every day. On the peak days, which is Tuesday through Thursday, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there would be a maximum of sixteen staff and two administrators. On Mondays, there would be a maximum of fifteen staff and two administrators. On Fridays, a maximum of thirteen staff and two administrators. The maximum of one hundred and fifteen children, the reason that Mr. Gillen said that we don't use just a completely random set of arrivals is because the children do not arrive in random fashion. And this is not, what I'm about to say does not mean that somebody's going to be on the phone with the parents saying you have to arrive between seven and seven fifteen. That 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 kind of regimen could be instituted if necessary. But what what we mean at this juncture, when when saying that the arrivals are not entirely random, is the follows. The of the one hundred and fifteen children, the expectation is that fifty five of them, which is infants, toddlers and preschoolers, it's different groups, but collectively fifty five children will be arriving between seven thirty A M and eight fifty A M. So that's an eighty minute window. There's another thirty children who arrive in the morning, but they don't arrive until shortly before nine or after nine o'clock. And then there are thirty after-school kids who don't arrive in the until the afternoon and they arrive in in buses. So that's the, that's how you get to the one hundred and fifteen, fifty five in that peak eighty minute period. Then another thirty thereafter, but still in the morning, and then thirty in the afternoon. We also
Excuse me. So are you saying that it would be acceptable to condition this to have no more than eighty five students prior prior to the after-school students?
I believe that, yes, I believe the answer to that is yes, because that's the program that that Pat and I have spent a fair amount of time discussing.
Maximum eighty five students between, you know, like seven o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, whatever time they they arrive in the morning. But yes, the answer to that is yes, because a a component of the one fifteen is after-school kids.
Okay, thank you.
And then the another important factor is in in doing our traffic analysis is that not all, a a significant number of these children are siblings. And so that means they do not generate one vehicle per arriving child. Ms. Day can speak to this if you, she's here. So if you want to ask her these questions yourself directly, that you're certainly welcome to. But basically, the information that she and I have discussed about this is that there are, you know, certain percentages, a substantial percentage of children who are siblings in the in her programs, which isn't surprising. So that would be two children arriving in one vehicle. And that means that the number of arriving vehicles is less than the number of arriving children. And, sorry, excuse me. So, for example, Ms. Day's data on, you know, how many of her children are siblings confirm that, you know, of the of the fifty five children that I referred to that would be arriving in period between seven thirty and eight fifty? Out of that fifty five children, her expectation, if if historical trends continue, is that about thirty of them will be siblings. And in other words, they'll have another, so those thirty kids in this example would arrive in fifteen vehicles and the other twenty five children would arrive in a single vehicle. So, you know, that that, just as an example, that fifty five, that group of fifty five children would would be expected to generate approximately forty vehicles arriving to drop them off. It's also the case, one of the features of this site as we've designed it is, as you may recall, is that there's a drop off lane. And then there's a an access lane to access the back parking areas. Staff, much of the morning staff will arrive before the children start to arrive, obviously, because they need to be there to help them in. But to the extent there's any staff members that arrive during this peak drop off period, our our driveway access is such that those those vehicles can proceed directly to the rear parking area where staff will park. So they're not going to be sitting in a in a queue or adding to the length of a queue. There was a comment that was made at one point during this process by one of the opponents of this project that when we when we just had two lanes, that if somebody comes in and they're trying to get to the back parking area, but they're sitting in the drop off lane, they can't get through the drop off lane, even though they don't want to actually go to the drop off lane. I think that was actually a very useful, helpful comment. And that's why we have redesigned it so that now there is a separate drop off lane. So if you're not planning to drop off your child at the front entrance, such as a staff member or some parents, you can go to the back parking areas directly and you're not stuck in a drop off lane. And that will also greatly facilitate or or reduce the idea of traffic backing up onto Central Avenue. But the analysis, so so when this this concept is something that Mr. Gillen mentioned that I wanted to try to clarify because it took me a while to get my head around it, is this issue of of so-called random arrivals. We are not saying, we are not agreeing with the concept of random arrivals for all one hundred and fifteen children or all, say, eighty five children in the morning. But we do know from a programmatic standpoint when those fifty five children will arrive, because that's driven by when their when their programs start. And in within that eighty minute window for those fifty five children, we are assuming for our analysis, random arrival. We are not saying we're going to tell this group of ten parents that they have to arrive between seven thirty and seven forty five. And then we have to, you know, because that's that's something that would be implemented. You know, Pat Day did implement something like that for COVID, but we're not basing our planning and our assumption on imposing that kind of a regimen, you know, sort of indefinitely going forward. But she has the ability to do that if if it becomes necessary, which we sincerely think it will not. And so the analysis was is sort of a hybrid. Not entirely random arrivals, but random arrivals for groups within various arrival windows. And so the other thing that I I'm not sure it came through clearly when Mr. Gillen was just speaking, had to do with this issue of traffic backing up on Central Avenue, just, you know, heavy traffic. And and to the extent that that is exacerbated or contributed to by the timing of the lights at the intersection of Central and Charles River. My understanding is that the back and forth between Mr. Diaz and Mr. Gillen on this subject focused in part on the question of the extent to which the timing of the lights, as it currently is set, the timing is currently set, contributes to delays. And whether or not there's a a more optimal timing that could be adjusted for those lights that would help reduce the delays on Central Avenue. My understanding is that the analysis from both of those gentlemen is that, yes, there is a better timing that could be done and that that would help. It would improve, or maybe people have such a negative view of the delays on Central Avenue. It would make it less bad on Central Avenue, the the backups at the light.
Let me ask this question, then. Who has the legal authority to change the timing of those lights? And within that legal authority, who has the skill set to do it properly?
Well, those are two, those are two different questions, because Mr. Gillen would say that the, he used to have the legal authority and the skill set. He still has the skill set, but apparently he is no longer sort of under the law a class of persons who is allowed to change those lights. But there's somebody within the town, I believe, who does some, you know, perhaps it's in the engineering department. But the reason I was bringing this up is that my understanding is that that, you know, once the engineering analysis has been done as to what's the optimal timing of the lights, that changing that that timing is not a particularly strenuous sort of expensive exercise. And that, assuming that the cost, you know, I'd I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Diaz has to say about that or what he estimates the cost of making that change would be. But, you know, we are, we are prepared to participate in that cost if if that's a, you know, a reasonable sort of contribution to the traffic issue on on Central.
Has the authority to adjust the timing of the traffic lights? Mr. Gillen is nodding his head, as is Mr. Diaz.
It's just not, I'll let I'll let John Diaz speak to this. But, you know, I looked into it and it's not a state traffic signal, it's a town signal. And you you do have to, you know, be a P E in order to make the, to 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 come up with the timing. But an electrical engineer that that is familiar with the traffic signals, operations and settings would be able to do it. I'm I'm sure that if the town does not have the skills under employment right now, they definitely could could hire someone to make those changes. That I would call a minimum cost, because I I ran three departments, you know, I ran Brickline Boston, okay, Quincy for years. And 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 my people would want to do it. And if I didn't have someone available, I'd get a traffic signal contractor to come in and then they'd make the change. But mostly, Susan Towns have that ability, but I'll let John speak to that.
Yeah, John, or you think that summarizes it well, well, well enough for the time being?
Yeah, that that's fine. The the only concern I would have is is just monitoring it afterwards, because sometimes you make the change and things don't work the way you think they do. The actual making the change to the controller is is fairly simple. I'm sure that the town has that ability through engineering or D P W to do that.
But, but question.
Yeah, Marty, go ahead.
If you engineer some change to the traffic light to so-called optimize it, don't you risk creating other problems?
No, that's what I was
Perhaps with 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 the lights that perhaps serve other streets in the area? I mean, is this going to be a whack-a-mole problem?
I mean, it's, you're not going to impact anything more than half a mile, if that, fifteen hundred feet. I mean, it's, you're talking minor changes a second or two here or there. I haven't seen the proposed, as Jack is saying, you optimize. If this, if there were intersections, another intersection five hundred feet away, yeah, you'd have to look at both of them. But this one is is a pretty isolated intersection. But I that that, I mean, some monitoring just to make sure, because the analysis, is it always correct? I mean, you could, you know, you could see something that you weren't expecting. So you don't want to just look at it again.
Um, okay. I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing Mr. Diaz. I'm not sure if that's me or
No, he would, he was breaking up. It was, it was hard to understand him. But I think we've got the gist of the of the discussion on that. And and to answer you, to partly answer your question, Marty, since I live in that neighborhood, to the to the south, there isn't another traffic light until you get to Dover Center, which is probably miles away, many miles away. And to the north, there's not another traffic light until you get to Great Plain Avenue and Central Avenue, which is mile, at least a mile and a half away. So.
I'm not an engineer, but I I can just imagine there's almost always unintended consequences.
Well, that's true for everything in life.
That's the truth. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So tho- those are kind of the the points I wanted to make. I felt those would be important pieces of information for the board to consider. You know, it's it's your hearing, Mr. Albert, but I I would, I would be very interested in hearing what Mr. Diaz has to say.
That's where I was planning to go next, was to ask Mr. Diaz to make to make his comments. With the understanding, Mr. Diaz, that you were breaking up before, so I may have to ask you to. We were having trouble understanding you because your voice was breaking up.
Is it any better now? Is it still choppy?
Right, right now, it sounds okay.
All right, I may, if it's easier, maybe what I'll do is shut off the video just to save some bandwidth. If that's, if that works, just to be safe. I apologize, I'm I'm on the road and going through a mobile hotspot, so I had to take the call this way tonight. Yeah, I do, I don't know how, Mr. Chair, if how you want me to do it, to address the respond to what Jack had presented tonight or go through the the previous comments and resolution or or respond to questions from from the board, but what do you?
Why don't we start with the with the previous comments? Give us the summary of that and then move on to what to 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 what Mr. Gillen presented tonight.
All right, so I don't, if I have it on my screen, I don't know if someone wants to pull up. The the latest correspondence we we sent was the letter dated August twenty sixth.
Yep.
And I'm just going to quickly go through that. Basically, we had looked at all the initial materials submitted by the proponents. There are a couple of versions of the traffic studies, the site plans, all of that. Our first round of of questions, we basically, or or comments, we just asked to have a a new traffic study done. It has been, has been stated, there was a lot of confusion as to the size of the school, the number of students in different reports or different numbers. So we basically had a report that that Jack prepared dated August eleventh that was was what we what we looked at. It was, if you remember, at the, I think it was the first meeting, first or second meeting, where the board instructed us to sit together and kind of hash out a number of the comments, which which we did. And as a result of that, that meeting, the study prepared on the eleventh, I should say, the the study of the eleventh was prepared and submitted. And that's, that's where the bulk of the 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 this letter addresses. So a lot of the comments, previous comments were addressed. As was said, there was a lot of confusion about the the number of students and how the the number of vehicles were being calculated. Rather than getting into whether there's a hundred and ten students, a hundred and fifteen students, whatever the number is, one of the methods the the you can use for the I T, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, is to simply base it on the square footage of the building. So that's how we figured that was the simplest way to come up with the the expected traffic was just to go by the square footage of the building. The the final number that, from our understanding, and I hope it's still to say the the correct number, is ten thousand thirty-four square feet with thirty parking spaces. Based on that, the we determined the trip generation, which was fifty eight vehicles entering the site in the morning and fifty one vehicles exiting the site and fifty two entering and fifty nine exiting in the evening. That those numbers, according to what I what I heard Jack say today, like I say, they were based on the square footage of the building and pretty much aligned with with what's anticipated from the historical numbers from the site. In fact, I think they were saying, I wasn't exactly clear, or or I shouldn't say not clear, the 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 specific distribution The, the, the specific distribution talked about tonight between. The seven thirty and eight fifty with fifty-five students and, and thirty after nine. It may have been in one of the older reports that was, but to be spelled out back clearly was, was a little new tonight, but based on that. If you, if you look at what they were saying with the siblings, the forty vehicles entering plus the eighteen staff. Uh, is right at fifty-eight. So the number is past that, that logical test that they. Uh, they, they are in that, in that range of about fif- between fifty and sixty vehicles entering and exiting the site during the peak hour. And again, just to.
John, Adam Locke would like to interrupt you, I believe, and ask a question at this point.
Okay.
Adam, you're muted.
I apologize and thank you. I, just uh, to, to be clear. We were. Based on, I think. Uh, historic practice. We're assuming that eighty-five students will arrive between seven thirty in the morning and sometime maybe around nine thirty, maybe a little after. And uh, there'll be another thirty students uh, for the afternoon program. And we talked about in the, the two morning segments between seven thirty AM and eight fifty AM. There'd be approximately thirty siblings, which would amount to fifteen vehicles plus the other twenty-five. So that's a total of forty vehicles. Between seven thirty and eight fifty, which is. Less than some other measure that was used to presume that there would be fifty-two vehicles in the morning. Except we have these. Thirty other cars. We don't know, we have thirty other students of which we don't know exactly of that, how many would be siblings. But let's assume it's. Uh, we could have as many as uh, sixty cars. And you're, uh, which is obviously eight cars different than the fifty-two. In one direction. Uh, does that? Have an impact? Does that delta have a significant impact one way or the other, Mr. Diaz? On the, on Central Avenue?
I'm not sure where you're getting fifty-two from. Um, the, the number. The numbers that. The trip generation from, from I T, again, just strictly based on the square footage of the building was fifty-eight entering and I believe fifty-one exiting. So fifty-eight vehicles turning, entering the site, so.
Was that southbound?
Uh, I, I don't have the distribution right in front of me. We can look at the, the map. That's total entering fifty-eight vehicles entering fifty-one exiting.
Okay, that, so that lines up with. With that, with what Pat's saying has been.
Right.
Right, and, and the reason, and the reason that the number entering and exiting are not the same, Adam, is because some of those are staff members who come in and park and stay.
I understand, thank you.
And, and just the, keep in mind too, when we're looking at the operations of the, the driveway or, or the, the signalized intersection, we're talking about a peak hour. So we're talking about a sixty-minute window. Uh, you're talking about operations that. Drop off from seven thirty until possibly nine, you know, nine thirty, so two hours. So again, the, the, the peak hour that we're worried about is that, that spike when everything's going to hit and that's what we're looking at. So. The, the total, I won't, obviously thirty kids arriving in the afternoon don't affect the, the morning operations, but you know, even if you said eighty-five. Eighty-five vehicles, that would be spread out over two hours, not just the, the peak hour of, that we're concerned about. So that, that makes sense?
It, it does. It's, it's a significant concern to some that. If you had sixty vehicles, whether northbound or if, you know, if they're coming. If they're coming southbound from the somewhere around the center of town. And they make a left into the driveway. That's going to have a substantial impact. In stopping the northbound cars. And also, uh, you know, we're concerned less in the morning about southbound traffic. We're concerned more about the northbound traffic, but it's still. You know, if you have, if you have ten car, I guess another way to look at it is to ask this question. If you've ten cars coming southbound. That at the same time or within sixty seconds of each other. Are going to line up to make that left. What happens to the traffic in both directions and what is the longest period of delay?
Well, that's what, that's what the, the analysis that Jack was talking about. Um, with the level service B and A. Um, that's, that's the best we can, we can do is use the, the software that, that projects those, those volumes. Keep in mind that the signal to the south is going to control that northbound. Flow just by default and it's going to create gaps in the traffic for that southbound uh, traffic to enter. The northbound traffic, maybe you have some courteous drivers, but if they're going north, they're, they're not necessarily going to stop. If they get through that signal, my guess is they're not stopping to let someone turn left in front of them into the school, so.
Until the light switches, so now.
Or, or, or there's, or there's a gap, just a normal, uh, you know, four-second gap in traffic enough for someone to come through, I mean. Uh, yes, but. And then the southbound. Yeah, there's, I mean, anything you put in that site, other than a, a residential house. Any vehicle that's turning left out of the through lane, yeah, there's going to be cars that stop behind it. Um, that's, that's any, any driveway, any road on a single lane road. You can't make a left turn. And the car behind you go through you. I mean, that's just, so there is going to be some traffic that backs up there, but. Based on the analysis that, that Jack ran for the, the numbers and the, the distribution into the site. Uh, it should operate a level service B. So yeah, though it's, it's a decrease from what's out there because right now there's no reason for anyone to slow down or stop. Uh, now you may have to wait and wait. You know, fifteen, twenty seconds for that car in front of you to, to make the, the left turn in.
So Mr.
The other thing, Adam, that I just wanted to say about this is, I don't know if it got lost in all the confusion, but one of the things that we're prepared to agree to and we've suggested at some point. Maybe it hasn't come up in the public hearing yet. Is um, that we're prepared to agree to have a. Member of the Needham Police Department there during the peak hour for the first several weeks. During the peak morning and evening hours to help alleviate the situation that your concern might grow. And that, you know, that would continue. Uh, unless, you know. Sort of based on the input from the police chief as to whether or not that continues to be necessary.
I, I, I appreciate that. Um, Evans and I. Specifically would probably advocate for a longer duration than just a few weeks because. Like we're talking about here and although.
No, I, what I was saying was a few weeks for sure, and then thereafter, if in the judgment of the police chief, it's necessary.
I see. I see. My. One thing that I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I guess, Mr. Gillen is. If you have the, if you have those vehicles. Traveling southbound from the center of town, let's say. Uh, making, making a left. And there is substant- that their greatest access point is going to be when there's a, a red light. Northbound. From Central Avenue at Charles River. In which case you're only competing with traffic making a right from Charles River Street onto. Traveling then northbound uh, on Central. If you have, if you have a, if you have ten vehicles making that left into the driveway. It doesn't, it doesn't take much to queue that traffic back up. Since, and you know, farther and what I'm trying to understand, Mr. Gillen is. How many vehicles? Do you expect to queue? What is the length of the queue on Central Avenue? From the driveway. All, you know, up towards, let's say, um, Great Plain Avenue. Do you have an understanding of if you have five cars, ten cars or fifteen cars traveling southbound? To meet on uh, Central Avenue to make left into the driveway? How long that queue is?
I'm going to interject something here, which is. Could prop, could possibly be dismissed as being anecdotal. But this is my personal experience because I live in this neighborhood. And for me to get to where I go on my commute. I'm on Charles River Street. Going uh, eastbound. And then I turn left to go northbound on Central Avenue. So I'm familiar with that traffic light and how it works. So you have, you have a green light for Central Avenue for cars coming from Dover. They go, they go, they go. Light turns red. And what you now have is a line of cars. Coming from, coming from. Coming from the west on Charles River Street. That have lined up to take the left turn and there's a left turn lane there. To take the left turn, they have a left turn arrow to begin with. They take the left turn onto Central Avenue. And then eventually that green arrow goes away and now it's, it's just a green light, so. So if the. There may be cars coming westbound on Charles River Street to turn right onto Central Avenue. Very little traffic from there, actually. There's some, but very little. But there's very little gap. From northbound traffic coming from Dover. They get a red light and now you've got all the cars. Turning left from the eastbound traffic on Charles River Street, turning left onto Central Avenue, and that's a steady flow. That's like, you know, it's. Lot of cars coming from Natick. And that area. Along Charles River Street. Um, and turning left. So, so to say that the red light. Stopping the cars that are coming from Dover. Creates. An opportunity for the left turns. Of the southbound Charles River Street traffic to turn into the driveway. There's very little gap there because you've got all those cars coming from Charles River Street, coming, coming from the west on Charles River Street to fill that. What that, what would be a gap. I don't know whether, wh- wh- whether that was all part of. The traffic study or not, but. But that's.
Yeah, it's anecdotal to me.
So that's why, that's why I'm curious. If there's any kind of a calculation, have you looked into?
Yes, you know, and, um. I, I, I don't put down anecdotal because that's how I learned what was going on and brought quite a portion of points. People would tell me what was going on. Then I go out and look at specifically what are you talking about and then how much to put into that. But what I will tell you is the classic calculations, the segue that we do do, that we do use. That looks at how much traffic is opposing. The left turns going into the driveway. It does look at that. It looks at what that volume is. Not only that. But when we look at those numbers. We inflate them by what they call a peak hour factor. In other words, if you had forty cars and you spread them out over ten-minute periods. Then you really wouldn't hit a peak. Fifteen-minute period. It would be worse than that. Well, you can't design it for average because that means half the time is better, half the time is worse, you know? So. We look, we inflate the volume, not only going into the site. But the opposing volumes going in the other direction. We inflate those by a peak hour factor. And then the software, they're. To do, to do a calculation sometime, what I used to do by hand, there used to be about six pages of calculations for. One morning peak hour, just one iteration like existing, then you do the baseline, then you do the belt. It'd be about six pages of calculation, but the software, it runs through all of those equations. And it looks at, at it really quickly, then it spits out. And I'm not going to show it up, well, but they had, this is, this is the soft, this is the spit out from. Calculations and, and not to look at it, but John's looked at it and, and, and uh. What we're saying is. There isn't going to be, there is not going to be a substantial queuing and delay trying to get into that driveway based on. Your assumptions of how many cars are going in it. And what you think is going into that uh, northbound lane. Based on what you've seen and during a morning peak hour. We, I understand that. I mean, I used to listen to that all the time. But these are the real numbers of what we're looking at out there and what the software does and how it. Estimates these uh, delay and the levels of service and. You know, based on what I'm seeing, and I'll let John speak for himself. You don't have that many going into the site in the morning when the heavy opposing traffic is coming out. In the evening peak hour, you've got people going in to pick up the kids, but there's not as much northbound traffic, you know, going to work. So that works as well too. That works a little bit better than the morning, as a matter of fact. So I'll, I'll let John speak to this, but we did what you asked us to do. Which was to look at the exact numbers, look at what was going, consider. How the, there may be an issue with the delay and with the uh, with the stacking. We did look at that. And, 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 oh, you'll to go.
The only other thing that I would like to add to this discussion is. That Adam's question is based on the premise or the hypothesis that. Ten vehicles arrive at more or less the same time or within one minute of each other. We're talking about a, an eighty-minute window. That um, that we, during which uh. Fifty-five children will arrive. You, you just, I don't know how to say this, other than the fact that you need to acknowledge and accept the fact that some of those children are siblings. And that is not going to be fifty-five vehicles. We think it's going to be forty vehicles, but if it's forty or forty-five or, you know. It's, it's some number less than the number of children. The, this plus on just random distribution concept basically means that. Yes, it is theoretically possible that if you have fifty, let's call it forty-five vehicles arriving in an hour. That ten of them will arrive in one given minute. But that the likelihood of that is exceedingly low. And if they are truly arriving randomly. And so, um, you know, when traffic engineers design. Um, you, you know, or make analyses about traffic flow and levels of service and so forth. They do not design to assume sort of the one percent scenario. That ten vehicles out of forty-five all arrive in a one-minute span. Is it theoretically possible? Yes, I mean, it's theoretically possible that all forty-five of them arrive at the same time, but we all know that's not going to happen. And so, um, you know, the, these traffic analyses. Are based on a lot of sort of history and information and data. That includes the fact that when you are, when you have, you know, a given number of vehicles arriving during a given time period. They tend to arrive. Uh. In a random way, not all at the same time.
So, so I understand that it's, it's. Uh, and in fact. Uh, Pat, I think you provided um, at a previous hearing. A summary of your records. That as a result of COVID, you had to sign for, um, it's actually nothing to do with COVID, but. I think as other state requirements. You had a record of how many cars arrived and what, and at what moment in time they arrived. Is that right?
Uh, it's not the amount of cars, but all the parents are required to sign in. And we're required to have the time that they sign in and the same thing when they leave at the end of the day. When they uh, sign out.
And when they.
During COVID, that was done by um, the staff, but it was, it was still required to get an accurate time.
So when it's not COVID, are they signing in? Is, is the staff uh, doing the sign in and marking the time?
Yes, because um, we didn't, and we still do not allow the um, families in the building, just the children.
So we're dealing with a couple of challenges with the data set because. The circumstance, the circumstance at the church. Is going to be different than the circumstance at the current, at the proposed site. And I think you did have some kind of a breakout. I, I'd like to see it again. I'm a little lost in a thousand pages of documents we've already received, but. I would like, uh, uh, Evans, if you could provide. A breakdown. Of, let's say fifteen-minute intervals. From seven fifteen. To nine thirty. I think for the, for the period of time for the, for the, for the school year. That began prior to COVID. Even if we have just September. From September to December data before COVID struck. I'd like to see a breakdown of. I'd like to see a breakdown of how many signings you had over that fifteen minute period of time.
Can, could I jump in here for a minute?
I could just say it's going to be the same, only in COVID, we didn't have the same hours because we had to shorten the hours of the day. So instead of going seven thirty to six, we were going eight to five. And at some point, eight thirty to four thirty. So it's, but, but we're full. We aren't not full. I mean, we're
So the, the answer to your the answer to your question, Adam, is I will work with Pat to get you that information.
I understand.
Can, can I just jump in here for, for a minute? Because I think we're going down a rabbit hole here and and I'd like to, I'd like to offer something. The, the analysis that was done, that, that Jack did, that I reviewed is, is a standard traffic engineering practice. It's a Synchro software. You, you put in the expected number of trips. In this case, it was forty-six enter, making left turns in, twelve making right turns in. You put in the opposing traffic. I think it was thirteen hundred something vehicles on the northbound opposed and those forty-six in. As Jack mentioned, that looks at the whole hour factors in a peak hour factor and gives you the analysis. It was a level service B with a queue of less than one vehicle. We can look at fifteen minute intervals. We can look at this. I don't know what you're going to do with it. The software that we use, it was done the way you do the software. We can argue whether the software is right. But if we start doing our own calculations to say, well, we got fifty, we got fifteen vehicles entering between eight forty-five, we're going to spend months trying to figure out who's right or wrong. I'm coming back to the standard practice, the standard software that we use. The driveway operates at a, basically a level service B. Is it going to be worse than that at times? To some degree, is it going to be better than that at times? At, at some point. I think the, with, if the offer is on the table to have a police officer at the driveway, that's going to address any issues. If there is a, a queue backing up, they can move the traffic through or stop people from stop people and make, if there are ten vehicles backed up, they can stop the northbound approach for thirty seconds and let those, those ten vehicles pull in, in a case like that. I would also, I would also suggest a monitoring study just to, to come back to, to moni, once if ever things go back to normal, to, to go out and, and say, this is, this is what the traffic study projected. We said there were going to be forty-six vehicles entering from the, from the south and twelve from the north. Well, you know what? We had, we had it wrong. It should have been thirty-five and twenty-three or whatever. And this is the, this is how things work now. We can do a monitoring study down the road. I've, I've been enough of these, these debates where you can get lost in debating whether it's a ten second delay, a fifteen second delay, thirteen cars, fifteen cars. It's, it's, I think the, I, I feel like the, the numbers make sense from whether you look at it from the square footage, whether you look at it from the historical records. We're talking about sixty vehicles entering and exiting the site during the morning. And based, based on that, it looks like the driveway operates, operates fairly well. It's going to be different than no operations there at all. There's going to be an impact to, to Central Ave, but it's not going to, it's not going to back up, you know, to the dump. Because someone's turning into the school in the morning. I think, I think we can pretty confidently say that.
Dean, you have a question?
Comment really. I want to, I want to follow on what John Diaz said and, and John Diaz is the, at GPI, the peer reviewer that was engaged by the town to make sure that the traffic impact report was accurate and all his questions were answered. There's been a lot of talk of exactly how Pat Day operates the Needham Children's Center. But what comforts me is, and I, I thought of this, you know, earlier today, and I went back and reviewed the traffic study in the comments. The, the level of service, et cetera, is based on the square footage of the building and the ITE standards that are applied to that. And and even with that very objective standard being used and the software being applied to it, we have a satisfactory level of service. So I think it's a wonderful thing that we can also expect a certain type of operation. And I'm very much in agreement with the police presence at the beginning and also very much in agreement with the monitoring that should occur at a period of time later when things have been operating for a while. But I think we're focusing too much on the particular operation. The one issue that I've always had a little bit of trouble with is really that many siblings? Well, maybe it's a particular thing of, of this particular year. It's hard to, for me to say that, that geez, that really the way these operate with that many siblings, but it doesn't matter. Because we're using objective standards here and they're working. And the redesign of the project to create the longer lane and so forth, it seemed to me made it work. So you know, I think John, you're something about we're going down a rabbit hole or something. And I think we are.
Okay, John Diaz, you were presenting.
I was.
I believe you were still kind of close to the beginning of.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm not going to go, I'm not going to go through comment, comment by comment. I think the, the biggest, I, I think the discussion we just had was, was the biggest concern about the operations there. You know, I, I will say that it, before the site design, you know, we had a lot of concerns about the, the site plan itself. As was talked about the last meeting pretty significantly, you know, with the redesign, adding the, the queue lane there. That, again, with the police presence there, I can, I, I can pretty confidently say that, you know, traffic isn't going to be backing up onto Central, spilling out onto Central Ave and, and causing problems, causing problems there. Just to touch on the, the Charles River Road signal that's at Central there. You know, as I, I haven't seen the, the analysis of the, the optimized time. So, you know, obviously I do want to look at that and, and see what that looks like. And then, you know, we can figure out the board can decide, you know, how that, how those get implemented and, and costs or sharing, however that works. Just I believe those are the, the, the big things. I guess just to, to go back to the, the site plan, there were a couple of things said at the beginning of the meeting that I just want to just clarify for the, for the, the record and regarding the, the drainage, there, there was a comment on the drainage. We talked a little bit about last, at the previous meeting. I know the, there was some plans submitted. I didn't look at them because I don't think they were included in the board's packet for, for this, so I didn't want to confuse things and, and start talking about those. There, there were a couple of other outstanding comments on that. Just one B, the, we had started to have a discussion about the sidewalks at the front of the, the property along the frontage of the property and, and whether the, the proponent would those should be reconstructed now as part of this, this project in, in plan for, you know, a potential future sidewalk upgrade along the corridor. And then the only other comment that we had outstanding was, excuse me, was the issue about, we just want to see the, make sure a truck could, a delivery truck could access that, that space with the, with the turn template. Just to make sure that there were no issues with it. You know, needing to have so many empty parking spaces or something for the truck to get there. We want to make sure the truck can maneuver through the site without impacting any of the parking spaces. In the interest of time, I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any specific questions from the board, but I think we, I think we've addressed most of the issues with the site plan and the discussion tonight.
I have two specific questions for John Diaz. The first one is in John Gillan's presentation, I heard him mention many times. This is, this is new information. John Diaz hasn't had a chance to see it yet. This is new. John Diaz hasn't had a chance to see it yet. You want to, you want to comment about those issues and it, it sounds like you need more time to review? To review those things?
There, there were, there are a couple of comments. Let me, give me a second here just to go back.
And I think, just if I could help direct you, from my review of the back and forth, I think the only things in your August twenty-six memo or letter that you did not say this has been satisfactorily addressed were items ten, ten and twelve.
Ten and twelve, yes, yeah. Yeah, well, so one, one Jack talked about tonight briefly, that was the, the citation in the report that said the southbound traffic at the, at the driveway was a level service A. And that calculation was based on a separate analysis for a left, a left turn and a, the through movement. Obviously, it's a single lane there. So, so that, that was just more to edit the re, the final report or, you know, fix the tables. And then the, the second comment that wasn't addressed was regarding the, the operations at, at Charles River Road. The, the analysis that was done didn't, didn't, wasn't based on the, the actual timings that were provided that they're, are in operation. So we just wanted to look at that again, and that kind of ties into the, the second comment there about the, the, that was to, what did, can the signals be optimized to improve operations there? And, and Jack had mentioned that tonight that, that he did go through that. I just haven't, we haven't seen those optimized times. So those are really the two outstanding from the traffic. One was about the, the level of service. Not necessarily the calculation. The calculation was fine. I just want to make that clear. The calculation was fine. It's just how it was presented in the table in the report. And then the second one had to do with the operations at, at the signal.
And I would just like to say on that, that what happened here with all the paper going back and forth is after Mr. Diaz wrote this September twenty-six, I'm sorry, August twenty-six memo in which he said there's a couple of things that are not addressed. Mr. Gillan did do an analysis as Mr. Diaz had requested in item twelve. Mr. Gillan sent it to me. I did not, I, I just dropped the ball on that. I didn't get it to the town. So that, that analysis was done in early September. But it's my fault that it did not make its way to Mr. Diaz.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Albert, could I just ask for a five minute recess? I just need to use the restroom.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
We're going to break for five minutes. And with that break, I will tell you that the Red Sox are leading. Last time I saw it, it was three to nothing.
All right, good news.
I'm above, you know.
What inning?
I think they're fifth. I think they're starting at the top of the fifth.
I'm going to change my location into the living room, but I think I can do it in five minutes. Okay.
It is still three to nothing, top of the, and, and they're starting at the top of the fifth.
I'd like to test my audio. Marty or Paul? Thank you.
So it looks like we're still waiting for Adam and Lee and John Diaz.
And I'm here.
I'm here.
John Diaz, are you here?
I am here.
Alex Clea, are you here?
Yes.
Okay.
Here.
And Suzanne, you're still on the screen. So. Were you still here?
I'm here.
Good. Okay. Then everybody's here. Let's get back to business. So my second question, John and Evan doesn't want to hear this question. I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, everything here is based on the building having a 64 foot setback. If we push this building back to 150 or 200 feet, does that alleviate these traffic concerns that I'm sure the neighbors are still going to have even with everything that you and John Gillen have presented to us?
Does pushing the building back alleviate the traffic concerns? Well, you're not changing the number of vehicles entering or exiting the site. So you're not going to?
But whether? But we're lengthening the driveway.
You're, you're lengthening?
We're pushing, we're pushing everything back. We're putting, we're lengthening the driveway. We're pushing the, um, uh, the parking spaces back farther so that you don't have, um.
Well, right now, but I mean, I don't, it, it would obviously depend on what the site look, site plan look like. I mean, I'm, I'm comparing something that's in concrete in front of me with a plan that I don't know what would look like. So that, that being said, I can't say whether it'd be better or worse. The, what I, I guess the way I can answer that is with the addition of the, the storage lane that they added, that should sufficiently handle the, the queue for the drop off in the morning. If it's a longer driveway and a longer queue length, you're going to have more room for, for queuing. But it's the, the analysis and the, the way it's designed, it doesn't show that the, the traffic is, you know, spilling out onto, to Central Ave. What we just spent the last, you know, half hour talking about the operations at the driveway, um, you're still going to have 46 vehicles entering from the north or 12 from the south or whatever that distribution is, 58 vehicles entering in the morning. So whether the driveway is 50 feet or 300 feet, that's not going to change the operations, um, on the driveway at Central. I don't know if that specifically answers your question. I mean, if I had two site plans in front of me, you know, I, I could, I could do a better comparison, but, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that, that answers it or, or not.
I, I'd like to speak to this, Mr. Albert. So my sense is that no matter how many times we redesign this or improve it, there are people who are going to say, well, it's still, there's cars going to still spill out onto Central Avenue. And the question for the board is not, how much more, you, you know, how, how many more times are we going to worry about the possibility of cars spilling out on a central avenue? In my view, the issue for the board is, do we, the board have reasonable assurance that the professionals that we are being advised by have analyzed this situation and determined that traffic is not going to spill out, back out onto Central Avenue? We've got a 10 car queue lane. We've got 30 parking spaces on site, uh, of which in the morning, you know, perhaps as many, maximum of 16 would be taken by staff and on some days not. So you've still got 14 parking spaces. So that's 24 places for cars to go. You've also got a 350 foot access lane, which in theory, in theory, cars could be sitting in. What's not going to happen, especially with a, with a police officer there at the entrance, is somebody sitting in the northbound lane of, of a, of Central Avenue refusing to come on site because they want to get into the queuing lane. If I'm a parent in a hurry and I come in and I see that the queuing lane is full and I have an empty lane in front of me to get to the parking area, and I know that the average drop off time for parents is a minute. So now if I'm at the back of this 10 car lane, there's a 10 minute wait for me to drop off my child, I'm going to drive up to one of the empty parking spaces, park there, get out, drop off my child and get back in my car and be gone before that 10th car has gotten up to the drop off here.
Okay. Members of the board, you have any further questions with regard to traffic? Or John Gillian or John Diaz? Adam?
I, I'm just going through my notes. I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Um, I, in the August 26th letter from, um, Mr. Diaz, there, I'm just going to pull up, I think it was paragraph number four. Paragraph number four, paragraph number three, and paragraph number two. It references 30 parking spaces is sufficient based on a town calculations. Uh, one question I had was, what are those town calculations?
Oh, we had that before. Lee, do you want to reiterate how we got to the 30 spaces for Adam?
No, 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 it's not the 30 spaces. It says it's based on town calculations. I wanted to know what the town calculations were. I apologize.
I can respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mr. Diaz has, has used these ITE figures, um, which generate a, a expected parking requirement for a building based on its footprint. The town has traditionally used a different formula for childcare facilities and similar facilities and that.
Evan, can I just, just interrupt you? The ITs for the, the trip generation, not the parking generation?
I'm sorry. I thought there was two methods of calculating required.
There is a, there is an IT parking, uh, generation manual. We, we were talking about, I don't want to just, I don't want to confuse the numbers we were talking about earlier, the 58 vehicles with, with the 30 parking spaces.
Okay.
I, I just didn't want to.
All right. So, so let me just confine my answer to this reference to the town calculations. I think what's being referred to there is the formula that the town has traditionally used for calculating the parking requirement for this kind of a facility. It's not based on the size of the facility. It's based on, uh, one, uh, eight, the, the formula is basically eight spaces for, for, for any facility that's got more than 45 children. It's coming in, it's eight spaces plus one space for every 40 children, plus one space for every staff member on the maximum staff. So, uh, in this case, that formula would yield, if you're assuming 115 children, it would be eight plus three is 11, plus the maximum number of staff, which would be 18, which gets you to 29.
That's, I, I appreciate that clarification. Uh, thank you. Um. There was a, there was a question about a catch basin, um, and removing it from the driveway apron. And, uh, a question that I had was, uh, has the applicant agreed to remove it from the driveway apron?
So that issue, Mr. Glossa did redesign the drainage down at the, at the, you know, where the driveway approaches Central Avenue. We did submit a revised drawing from Mr. Glossa last week, I think it was, um, uh, or perhaps the week before. I don't remember exactly, but it was, um, at, at least last week where we submitted, um, this one page where that particular site plan had been revised. I, um, if I want to be daring in terms of my technical expertise, I could try to pull that up on the screen right now, if you want me to do screen sharing. Um, but that, that document revising the, the drainage at the so-called apron has been submitted to the town.
Okay. Um, let me, if I can just jump in there and Lee, I don't know if you, you want to answer this, um, because that was the materials that I sent over to you. I think it was on Thursday or Friday.
Yes, those materials, yes, Evans, those materials were not submitted to the town. Um, we, we received no formal, um, transmittal from you. Um, I believe that your engineer may have been forwarding that on to John, but I received nothing formally from you as the applicant with those drawings. So.
They were, well, all right. They were uploaded to the town share file, perhaps.
Well, we weren't, we weren't notified about it and I received no communication on it.
All right. Well, and again, this would be an example. This would be an example. There's a lot of little details here. And this would be an example of where our engineer has responded to Mr. Diaz's comment. He has redesigned it to address the drainage issue. I think that the appropriate way to handle an issue like this is to make sure that, you know, it's been addressed to Mr. Diaz's satisfaction and, you know, and that's that.
Can, can I just jump in there? Cause I, I did, I did look at it. I mean, I, I had the plans. I, I opened them up and, and looked at them. I am a little confused and, and John Glossa, we can, we can talk about this. Um, the original, the first plan had a single catch basin in the middle of the driveway. And we talked about moving that because it was in the apron. Then you had a set of, uh, revised plans at the last meeting that you put two additional catch basins, um, at the end of the driveway, uh, but the, the one was still shown in the eight, the apron. It looks like the set of plans you sent me now took those two catch basins at the driveway out again, but still has the catch basin in the apron. So before I look at another set of plans, I would just ask that, um, we make sure I have the right ones and that, that that was the intent to tech out, take out the catch basins that we talked at length about, um, at the end of the last meeting, but those are now gone, based on the plans that were, I had from last week.
Well, so first of all, John, um, the last set of plans is September 28th. So those are the ones that you should be looking at. And I'm looking at that plan right now. So I don't know what you're not seeing, John, but if you look at the inset, the two catch basins that we added, um, when we widened out the, uh, to have the other lane and you had asked us about, you know, the water running over the sidewalk, those are still shown on the plan. So I'm not sure what sheet you might be looking at, but if you look at sheet four, they're definitely still on the plan and they're still part of the project. And I think they are.
Okay. Well, I'll, just whatever was submitted, I only got three sheets. So maybe that's part of the problem there.
That could be. And so.
This discussion happened.
Yep. No problem.
Away from this hearing. This is not for us here.
Understood.
So Adam, that, that was, that issue is still outstanding, just to answer your question.
I appreciate that. Uh, and, and just for clarity, um, we're saying that the level of service on Central Avenue during the morning peak at the site will be reduced from a level of service A to a level of service B. Is that correct?
Correct. The self bond approach. Yes.
And, and not, uh, and not more than that.
Correct.
Okay. I, I may have some additional comments or questions, but that's what I had in the moment.
Marty or Gene?
Um, I don't have comment, um, on the traffic. I do comment a question about lighting, but perhaps that's.
Let's stick with traffic right now, Gene.
Right.
Because I do see that there are attendees. I've got five hands raised for attendees. I'm assuming that they're for traffic. And so let's, let's stick with the traffic for now.
Let's get to hear them. I'm, I'm ready to hear them. I have no questions right now.
Okay. Then Alex, uh, what I have in, on my list, if they are in fact by, um, in, in, uh, order, oh, all of a sudden we're up to 11. Six people just raised their hands. So I would, um, I'm going to jump the line because Ms. Holly Clark has been very active and submitting many things and is on top of, I, I would like to start with Holly Clark and then we'll go in order of, um, uh, when people raise their hands. So can you move Holly Clark over, please? Holly, I believe you're on, if you can unmute yourself.
Hi. Is, is this good?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want us.
So, uh, thank you. Um, I have indeed been submitting things and, um, it is good that folks are probably, that folks are finally getting an opportunity to speak and be heard on this. I would, um, I think I want to comment a little bit on the, uh, one of the last things Mr. Huber said, which was that he thought if there were reports that had to go, um, to the experts, they should just go and that would be that. And I would, um, I'm sure he didn't mean it this way, but for people that live in this neighborhood, the public hearing is really important. Storm drains might sound boring to people, but if you live here and you're worried that a huge new building and parking is going to cause flooding in your property, it's really good to have this discussion in public, not because it's necessarily going to cause more consternation, but hopefully some of the information will be calming and let people have faith that the process is working. So I, I just put that out there. I don't think there's really much that can or should be done, um, behind the scenes, although obviously there's work that has to happen. But it is really, really important that this happen transparently and openly. So that having been said, um, I, I think I just want to step back and say, the neighbors have been very clear and consistent about their concerns about this project and traffic is a huge concern. That we have not changed one iota on the reality of living here. And so with all due respect, when you say Central Avenue is a level of service A in the morning, and what level of service A means is you can drive down the road uninhibited and not be concerned about other cars. No one that actually lives here can say that that is true. It simply isn't. And I am surprised that I find myself in a position of having to say that. The town knows it's true. Every traffic report about Central Avenue had, says it is a heavily traveled road. The town knows it's true. Every traffic report about Central Avenue had, says it is a heavily traveled road. I actually called the town's traffic engineer to say, I don't understand. How could this be that Central Avenue is a level of service A? Am I meeting something? Am I missing something? And he did not have an explanation for me. When you think about what the facts are that are being put forth here, we're being told that Charles River, the intersection at Charles River is at an F. Right? So, and at the backup there goes um, currently it's a six hundred and seventy-two foot backup in the afternoon. That means it is backed up thirty-four car lengths. It backs up from the corner of Charles River and, and central to seventeen levels, set Central Avenue. That's where Sally McKechnie lives. And when you go to the ninety-fifth percentile, it passes sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue. That's what the, that's what the reports mean. It means in the afternoon, the back, the traffic backs up from that corner past the driveway. And I know Mr. Gillen wrote, he observed the afternoon one time. And on that one time, he observed the backups from, from Charles River. It was in June. It was still pretty much during COVID. And he said, he did see it. He thought maybe there was, you know, a crossing light. That was the issue. I, I'm, and I'm just saying, so the one time you saw it, you saw the backups. And I'm sorry, but the same thing is true in the morning. I live at sixteen fifty-two Central Avenue. I'm in a butter. I'm right on the other side of Temple Aliah. When I come out of my driveway in the morning, I have to go, I go onto Central Avenue. I never can just pull out of my driveway. During traffic, you just can't. It's just not true. I wait. As my kids learned how to drive, I held my breath every time when they were leaving my house. That's how busy traffic is here. People are not no, we live next to daycare center already. Okay. We are not opposed to daycare centers. That is simply not true. What we really want is to see a full understanding of the realities of this street and to have, to see if there can be mitigation of those concerns. And so when you keep saying it's a level of service A, I'm sorry, it, it just isn't. It, it just, it just isn't. So
I, Mr. Could I, um, interrupt just to ask a question to Mr. Diaz?
Sure.
Mr. Diaz, are you, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
I just want to ask you a question. So you're hearing what Ms. Clark is saying. Maybe I, maybe we have a misunderstanding of what's meant by level of service A. Is there anything she's saying that can be true? If a, and have this be a level of service A area in the morning also? I mean, is, wh- what's the explanation for this distinction here?
The, the way that the, the driveway level of services is calculated, it looks at how the left turn, in this case, the, in this case, because it's a T intersection, how the left turn enters the site, gives you a level of service and that, and how the northbound, um, how the northbound movement works and, and how the driveway works for, for a because I understand the fact that the queue is backing up from the, the signal and, and maybe what we do to, to her point is rather than looking at, at as two separate, separate intersections, look at it as a corridor. So build out the network so that it's, it, it's all encompassing and we can see the impacts there. Be, because it's, it's just looking at the individual movements that, that left turn coming in is, is making a left turn across the northbound. So the fact that there's a queue there, it's, I'm not explaining it well and I, and I apologize. It's something I hear.
Here's what I'm hearing, John. Okay. Maybe, yeah, I'm hearing it wrong, but what I'm hearing is when you talk about level of service A, you're not talking about what she's talking about and vice versa. Is that, is that, am I right? Because the level of, hey, you're talking about, doesn't sound like anything that she's talking about.
So, so the way it was, it was looked at was that it was looked at the driveway itself, how the driveway operates. How, how does a vehicle coming south, I'll make a left turn in and how long does that vehicle have to wait? So it's assuming that vehicle is at the, is at the intersection. That, that it's the, it's looking at that movement of the left turn across the, the through traffic. It's not looking at how, how long that, that vehicle took to get there. In this case, if it's being impacted by the signal. What we can do is rather than looking at it as two separate intersections, we can look at it as, as basically a network. It's a little different analysis, but we can, we can do that. Um, analysis or, or the proponent can do that analysis to, to include it under, all under one. So that the, the signal cues will be basically shown going past the, the driveway. So we can reanalyze it and see what those numbers tell us.
Okay. Well, for, for what it's worth from me, um, it seems to me that that obviously should be done. Because the way it's been analyzed now, it avoids the whole problem that Ms. Clark is talking about. And that's not right.
Well, I would like to be heard here.
Well, here's what I think. I, I hear you after every witnesses. I don't think that's the way this kind of thing should be run myself. You can make whatever summary argument you want, but let's hear the witnesses. Let's hear the questions and answers from witnesses.
Jacobs, I think the, what the point I want to make has to do with not, you know, levels of service and that sort of thing. There's something that is getting lost here, which is that this is a forty A section three, uh, project.
That no. Huber, Mr. Huber, this is a forty A section three project for which this board can make reasonable regulations, including traffic mitigation. You keep staying over traffic mitigation, read the cases, Evans.
That I, I have read the cases.
Evans, no, I've had it with you telling me that forty A section three tells us that we can't do anything. And I'm telling you that, that all the cases, the Tufts case, the Rogers case, and a lot of other cases give us the ability to handle all these issues. We cannot deny you the use. We can, we can. And I understand what you're saying. And I understand the Pat Day is being very accommodating to help us get to a situation where we can have regulations that she's willing to live with, but to tell us that we can't regulate traffic, to tell us that we can't regulate how far back this building goes, to tell us that we can't regulate that barn, you are wrong. I've read the cases. I've read the statute. You keep making the same argument. You keep telling us we can't do what the law says we can do. Now I think Mr. Jacobs is right. There were times when you should just let other people speak. And then, and then answer and summarize all the situations. But we're already at ten fifteen. We're going to go to the next meeting. And what I'm hearing, we're going to go into November. And the way things are going, we're going to go into December. And part of the reason that we're going to go that late is because you have to answer every single person, every single time. And that's taking a lot of time, Evans. It's taking up your client's time. Have I made my point?
You've made your point very clearly. I don't agree with you, but you've made your point.
So to summarize my point, which is, I think the analysis that's been done on the traffic is the wrong analysis. I think what should be done is what John has suggested, treat it as a corridor is a different analysis. That is what I'd like to see because right now this talk about level of service A has to me become meaningless.
Ms. Clark, would you like to continue?
Sure. Um, I, I think the idea of a fuller analysis is really important here. Because one of the things the board is charged with, with factoring in is the impact of this project on surrounding streets and the surrounding neighborhoods. Forty-eight is not a get out of zoning jail free card. It just isn't. And it is a legitimate concern to be putting a commercial use in a residential area, particularly because you have homes right across the street here. And just to back up and talk about this site for a little bit, Central Avenue is arterial road. It connects town, towns from the south to the north. It's intended to get traffic through. It is however, only a two lane road. There are no shoulders, basically. There's no sidewalks on the easternly side. The side, no, on the westernly side, there's absolutely no sidewalks. On the easternly side where sixteen eighty-eight is and where I live, it's not a sidewalk. It's a, it's a trail. The property, this just doesn't have the infrastructure that you have in other places. And that's part of why the traffic study is so important. In town, uh, at the church now, there's on-street parking, there's an auxiliary parking lot, there's w- w- right connected, and there's other parking available. There's different ways to get to the childcare center. It is accessible by pedestrians. None of that can realistically be accept, expected to happen here at Central Avenue. It's going to be cars. There won't be walkers. And so it's really, really important to consider that uh, as, as the planning goes forward. The way this is set up right now, I'm sorry, when, uh, uh, in the morning, assuming folks are coming from the center of town, they're going to have to cross. I'm sorry, they're going to have to cross, um, the heaviest lane of traffic, right? In the morning, the rush hour is going toward Boston. So people trying to get into the childcare center are going to have to stop and take a left across the heaviest lane of traffic. They're going to be backed up. I live here now. I live next to the temple. When folks are coming in in the morning, a car pauses, it backs up past my house up to Pine Street. That's just what it does. Now there's no driveway there. So the folks on the other side of the street aren't impacted. They can't get out. One of the things that this site is uniquely concerned with is the car, houses on the other side of the street and how those people are going to be able to get in and out of their driveways. I am not saying it's an impossible problem to solve. Yeah. I'm not saying that, but I am saying that it has to be acknowledged as a problem. And right now, just saying, well, we're looking at the driveway site. And, and that's where we're saying it, it's, you can immediately turn right in. It, it, it's just meaningless. Like the idea of doing a full corridor is important. I am not kidding. And the four hundred and eighty people that signed the petition or our letter of concerns back in April, we're not kidding when they said Central Avenue is a parking lot some days, all the way, all the way from where we are here till you get to the dump, till you get up to Newman, till you go down the way. We're, I mean, we're not evil. We're not opposed to things. We're just saying this is the reality. And if we don't plan for the reality, how is this going to work? And one of the questions we have, for example, is this is what traffic is. We, we know that we have to leave extra time to get where we want to go. And it's increased over the years where, where that, that I've lived here, where I might've left before at seven fifteen to get into Boston. Now I leave at quarter to seven. Okay. COVID is, has changed that a little bit, but let's all hope we get back. But that reality will impact even the folks that are going to the daycare center. When you realize that, wait a minute, I have to factor in an extra fifteen minutes to get there and to get where I need to go, that's one of the questions that should be looked at. Now, I can ask questions about the, the traffic study and I submitted actually, um, a document, because I did go to see what the arrival was like at the daycare center and to see what the time it was. And I used the description that Mrs. Day gave me, that she had people come and turn off the car and get out and hand their children over and get back in. And that safety was really important. And that's the timing I used. And it was not a minute to drop kids off. It wasn't. And it wasn't sixty percent of the people with siblings. It wasn't. It was two days. It was in September. I've submitted that data. I am sure Mr. Gillen or Mr. Diaz, uh, could have done that, but that's the data that actually came from just in September. And from that you can extrapolate out what this, uh, the number of cars would have been. So that's that point. Um, a second thing, and I know that it's getting late and I know there are other folks here. But I did submit a document that gives the board the actual capacity of this building, the actual student capacity. And I here today, uh, and I have respect for Mrs. Day. Everyone, uh, there is no, nobody has anything ill to say about her as a childcare operator. But I will say that last time, that the last meeting, the proponents were saying, they were hoping that she would be their tenant, but maybe she wouldn't be. Now, I think in terms of planning, the board needs to plan and consider what is the full capacity of this building? And what will the traffic look like then? Because as Mr. Huber pointed out, the first, at the first hearing, then he was saying, well, we're let me back up a minute. Want the changing sands in this plan has been difficult. The plan asked for a hundred children. The proponent is saying a hundred and fifteen. The first plan at the first hearing in July, the proponent said, well, if we want to go higher, we'll come and we'll ask you. And now there's, and now perhaps they're saying, well, we'll cap it at a hundred and fifteen. That is problematic. And one of the things to think about is what is the actual capacity of this building? And what needs to be the plan for that? And I did submit, um, that analysis and I did submit, um, questions that the board can think about and perhaps Mr. Diaz, um, and Mr. Gillen, um, can answer. So, um, so I, I defer to you, Paul. I mean, I have questions about, um, even the contents of the traffic study, but if there can be a fuller one, it might be more productive to get that. Because this, this just this isn't measuring the reality. It, maybe the easiest way to think about it is just like Mrs. Day is saying, this is her reality and um, the traffic engineer said, okay, so we'll use that. The neighbors are telling you, this is the actual reality on the ground of Central Avenue. And I think we need to use that because that's, um, where this facility is supposed to be opening. So.
But could I just respond to, or maybe it's a, a question more than a response? Cause I'm a, I'm a little confused on a couple of things I heard. On the one hand, I heard that that we base our, our analysis, we, we base the analysis on IT standards. So that, that was that looks at, you know, numerous daycare, similar facilities across the country. So we're not specifically analyzing it based on this school use number of students. We, we specifically request that it be based on the square footage of the building to generate the traffic. So, so. So, so and, and I, I personally requested that so we would get away from, you know, this particular daycare center. This is based on a daycare center, which is the proposed land use. So I just wanna clarify that, that, that I think you made the, the statement there that we based on the act on Miss Day's reality. We didn't do that, or, or the proponent didn't, because I asked them specifically to use national standards for this, so that uh, I believe Ms. McKnight said earlier, it passes the sniff test. We did it based on these standard, the standards that are out there. It was done based on those, and that matches pretty closely with, with what the reality of the, the operations are. So I just want to, to make that point clear, that that was specifically why we did that, because we heard at the, at the early meetings that there was a lot of confusion, is it a hundred fifty, a hundred twenty nine, what that number is? And it kept floating. So we said, based on a ten thousand, I think it's ten thousand thirty-four, I may be off by a few feet, square foot building, the national standards indicate that you would get about a hundred twenty vehicles in the morning and whatever, I'm citing random numbers, but that those are the numbers. So that's why it was done that way. I just wanted to clarify that for, for the board, that, that we didn't specifically say this is based on her calculations. That, that's how the study was done originally. And we didn't want it that way because we were aware that we're not judging, we're not judging this particular use, we're judging the land use. So I just wanted to clarify that.
John.
John, let me just say, um, this is Marty. My concern is that we're hearing two totally different scenarios out there, and they can't both be.
Well, you, you're not, because we, as we discussed earlier, we, we had the national standards that showed about sixty vehicles entering the site.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about that. I'm not, yeah, I'm talking about a different thing. I'm talking about when you say that the traffic is at a level of service A in the AM and versus hearing from Ms. Clark, and we've heard from others, that the place is a parking lot many days. Now, how can both of those things be true? It can only be true, as, as I see it, is if you mean something different by level of service A than what I thought you meant. And so somehow that is not getting across.
What I heard, what I heard John's response to our being, to our discussing this about fifteen minutes ago, is that he was looking at it i- i- in a specific driveway um, scenario and, and perhaps he should be running it as a corridor.
Well, let me, let me expla- let, let me explain it, let, let me explain it this way. It's the, the unsignalized intersections, whether it's a driveway, whether it's a, a signal, whether it's a regular intersection are, are tough to do, especially when it's, when you got a signal there. What's governed, what's causing that backup is the operations of the signal. Okay? What?
Well, I'm sorry, do, do go on. Let me, let me, go ahead.
I think, I think you, you cited the signal operations, the queues that show there, show it backing up past the site. That's a result of the signal on the, on the, the southbound traffic there.
That's in the afternoon, yeah.
Well, if it.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
If there's, if there's no signal there, the traffic's gonna flow freely. There's a signal just south of the site that queues up past the site. I think we, we all agree with that. I don't think anyone's disputing that. So that's your, that's your choke point. What the, the driveway does is it looks at how that, that left turn vehicle can pass, can cross that northbound traffic. So that movement itself, based on, on the thirteen hundred and forty-one vehicles that are traveling north and that vehicle that's turning left across it operates to a level service B. Now, the fact that that car, and that's, that's where it gets confusing, is because that driveway falls in that queue. It's not, that driveway isn't causing the queue that that car is in. It's the signal. So that's why I'm saying, the driver was analyzed. But if you, it, what we could do is look at that, put it in with the signal and look at it from the whole corridor. It's probably still gonna say that the left turn into the site is a level service A. Because you're not changing the northbound, northbound traffic, but we could look at that and see what it is. The choke point is the signal there. And that's why we were asking the proponent to look at how that signal could be optimized. Can that queue be knocked down so that it's, the queue isn't backing up as far, hopefully not as far as the driveway, but at least br- doing some mitigation of reducing the queue and delays that intersection.
And if I.
I understand. I'm sorry, Paul.
Yeah. And what I'm hearing is that we have the ability to have, to, to put in regulations to alleviate the concerns. And a couple of, of solutions that we can put into our decision that hopefully will alleviate the concerns are number one. We get a better timing at the traffic light. It sounds like that can be done. And number two, we have a, 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 a police officer at the site directing traffic. Whether that's gonna be for a couple of weeks and then we say, okay, everything's working well, or whether it's gonna turn into a permanent situation that the Needham Children's Center is gonna have to pay for because we need to have somebody there to regulate traffic. These are two things, two things that we can put into our regulations that can, that can alleviate, hopefully solve these concerns. Now, Marty, we get back to the question of, do we wanna ask John Diaz to do the analysis on a corridor basis about level of service on, on, on the, on the road and and to, and to rerun it based on a corridor rat- rather than just looking at the, at the, at that particular driveway. But you know, I, 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 I am hearing right now at least two areas where the concerns, hopefully, and, and I keep saying hopefully be- because, you know, you never know whether something's gonna work or not, and there are, there are always unintended consequences.
Right.
But, but being able to change the timing of the traffic light, having a police officer directing traffic at the, at the biggest um, tra- at the biggest traffic times should be able to solve the problems that Holly Clark is raising.
I would like to hear from John or I guess John makes the most sense, whether that's correct. That's all I'm saying, because I don't think we have anything useful to go on now to find out whether that's gonna solve the neighbor's problem, everybody's problem that already exists.
Well, it's, it's not gonna alleviate the congestion on Central Ave. Central Ave is a, is a commuter route. The, the, you're gonna have traffic out there. The police officer can control the impacts of the, the driveway so that can help people make the left turn in, so they're not, they're not stopping the southbound traffic and the, improving the signal operations can reduce some of that delay and hopefully some of those queues out there. But it's not gonna take a thousand vehicles off Central Ave.
No.
So, but it's, it can mitigate, but, but it can mitigate that.
Traffic can see whether a neighbor is trying to pull out of.
Exactly. Exactly. So the police officer out there will, will be able to, to basically mitigate the driveway. And, and, you know, stop if there's a couple of stragglers coming northbound and there's, there's one or two vehicles waiting to make a left, you stop them for, for ten seconds, let those vehicles through and they continue on their way. What happens up in town when they get uptown and the delays they face there and at the Newman School, that's, I mean, that's, that's not part of this project, obviously.
Right. Jean?
Yeah, I just wanna add something to the two points you made, Paul. Uh, that is, uh, in our decision, we can require better, better timing of the traffic light. And it's been uh, said that that would be done, and that they will go, go full with that. The police officer, that it's been said that will be done. Um, at least at the start, uh, to see, you know, as long as it's, it's needed. But the third thing is something that John Diaz, I believe, mentioned, and that is monitoring. Monitoring over time to make sure that things don't, you know, this, don't get worse uh, in a year. And what, what difference does that make? What can they do? Well, um, we were saying, um, it seems that the driveway is long enough now. But what if it proves not to be? And the monitoring shows that there needs to be a change. Well, then, there would need to be a change. Um, that's what monitoring is all about. Uh, you don't just do it just for the sake of it. So I think we have to consider that and make sure our conditions are very clear on that.
Wouldn't it, I'm sorry, but if there is, if a Carter analysis can consider, for example, the intersection of Country Way and Central, which is in between Charles River and the site driveway and somehow was not included in the traffic study. And if it can consider the other driveways, it would give us more information because I think uh, Jean's point is important. But let's be clear, if we, if the building is built, the building is not gonna be able to get moved. So if you find out that there is an adjustment you can make that can make it better and can relieve people's concerns, I think it's uh, well worth that effort. Cuz it ju- I mean, this is just, it is, it's like somebody's speaking French and somebody's speaking English, and we're not getting through to each other.
Holly, let me, let me, can I just, sorry, Adam, can I, you wanna go, can I jump, jump in and ask a question or clarification?
Okay.
Just for, for those, those smaller intersections um, that you're, you're referring to. Um, I could tell you right now, left turn, turning out of there in the morning is an F. I could tell you, I, I mean, I don't have to do traffic counts. I could tell you that. I mean, it's common sense. You're in a, you're in a busy road. I'm not sure in terms of mitigation and what what can be on the table for that. You know, you, you could, you're not gonna have a police officer at every intersection along, along the corridor or at every driveway. So, I mean, if, if we, I shouldn't say we, if the proponent does, i- if Jack does a study and says, okay, so in the morning, it's a level service F coming out there, it's a seventy-five second delay without the school, with the school, it's an eighty-second delay level service F. Wh- where, where does that leave us? And, and I'm, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I just, I just don't wanna go through an effort and we're back here in, in two months saying, well, see, that driveway's at an F. We, we know it's at an F. So I, I think what, what the, what was suggested with the, with the police officer uh, with the, the signal operations, the, you know, i- if the, if the signal operation can reduce some of the queue there and the police officers at the driveway can see if, if the driveway is having a negative effect on, on the operation, they can wave traffic through. I mean, if it's, if the, if the driveway is operating so badly that it's backing everything up, the cop will wave people past the driveway and not let them turn in. I mean, let, let's face it, the, the cop is gonna be uh, out there to, to keep, for public safety and, and keep things safe. So I, I truly appreciate what you're saying about the side streets and the driveways there. I just, I just, I don't wanna be doing analysis for the sake of analysis when I think everyone in town and the board can agree that, yeah, making a left turn onto Central out of those side streets and driveways is miserable. But what is that gonna tell us? Okay, making a right, but what is, what is that gonna do?
This is.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if what you're saying is this is terrible awful traffic and we're just bringing gasoline to the fire. So, you know, there you go.
What I, what I'm saying is the incremental difference that the site will make on those, uh, the operations of those, the, the, those streets is, is gonna be practically immeasurable. So what, what are we gonna accomplish by doing that? I'm, I'm sure Jack will go out and get counts and, and is happy to do the analysis of those as many streets as you want. But we're gonna be here in a month saying it's a level service F now. It's a, with eighty seconds delay and it's a level service when the school comes in with eighty-five seconds delay. What is that gonna tell us? So.
A- Adam, you, you're very patient.
I, I apologize, and I apologize to bring this up. I have a question for Holly. Uh, and, and Holly, I, I guess my question is what you're sa- if I understand you correctly and if I've read your submissions correctly, if you're saying that Central Avenue is already a firestorm of traffic and that this brings gasoline to that fire, that the town has the, has the legal authority to say that this project does not fit. Notwithstanding, notwithstanding the Dover Amendment, but that if it cau- but if it causes that much problem that it's, becomes an impossibility to cure, as John has, as John Diaz has said, that then the best that can be, the best mitigation is a tr- is an ongoing uh, traffic uh, patrol and a better timing to keep traffic closer into Dover. If, if those two solutions can't accommodate it, are you saying that it's, this thing should not be built?
Um, Mr. Alfred, you may not like this answer, but I believe that legally, the answer is if there is a problem that cannot be mitigated, the board has the power to say no. I think it's rare. I think you should get the information. I think, um, and if you cannot mitigate the problem, you can say no. Or, and part of your mitig- even as you think of mitigation, you may say part of the mitigation might be to say it has to be smaller. There can, maybe there is some number of cars that is acceptable. But if there's no mitigation, then you can say no. You absolutely can say no.
All right, folks, it's ten forty-three and Holly Clark is the only neighbor who has had an opportunity to speak. And we have had people lined up here all night. There are up to fourteen other people who wish to speak. Board members, shall we allow one or two more people to speak? Or do we need to continue this hearing and ask these people to come back in two weeks?
My first comment is, I don't know if Holly was done yet. And my second comment would be to probably propose that once Holly is finished, that uh, we then uh, continue uh, to, you know, to another date.
I don't think we need to hear from anybody else tonight. Let's just put everybody off. And I know that can be a real pain to people. And I apologize for it, but this has taken a lot, a lot of time. And we're trying to give it the time it exert, i- it deserves. That's all I can say.
Jean?
Um, since we're not closing the hearing tonight, um, I, I do wanna quickly raise an issue that was raised by uh, our town engineer. Um, and that had to do with, with lighting. Um, on page two of his, of uh, Tom Rider's September second um, memo. Um, and um, I don't think that's been addressed at all, and I hope that it can be addressed.
It, it will be addressed. It's raised in Tom Rider's memo. It's something that um, you know, we're going to deal with in our decision. Uh, and, 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 and if we need to discuss it, I don't know that that's gonna take a large discussion.
No, it shouldn't. But I thought he was asking for a change in the plan or to have something shown on the plan. Um, he said, um.
I'd have to find his memo.
Please provide updated plans on the lighting for the additional parking area.
Evans, have you had a cha- have, have your people been able to focus in on that comment? There were a number of comments that Tom Rider made.
I thought, um, so I, I'm not sure at this point uh, whether that comment was made before or after uh, the lighting plan for the parking area that I've seen. I assume that comment is referring to the parking area behind the barn as its current. And I believe that there is lighting. I, I know there's lighting proposed for back there. It may be that that proposed lighting that includes the parking area behind the barn wasn't in front of Mr. Ryder at the time he made that comment. Wasn't in front of Mr. Ryder at the time he made that comment. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's a comment that was made quite a lo, quite a long time ago.
September second.
Was it only September second? Because I thought that it was like in August and then is in, in September, we got another. Note that said, all, all of my comments from my previous letter still apply.
I was just reading from his September second memo and I, I just, it's a, it's a little thing. But as long as.
I, I, I'm sure we can provide a lighting plan that includes lighting in that area.
That's what he wants.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we go on to other issues on this or on the agenda, I wasn't sure if Holly Clark was finished her comments and I wanted.
I, I was, I was, I was gonna get back to her. Holly?
I, I thought you were being kind and giving me a breath. And um, I actually do have some other comments, but this kind of is a logical stopping place. I, I do have comments about some of the onsite things, particularly about parking. And so um, if it's okay with you all, I might ask if we just do pause here and you can do your business and. Maybe I can pick up a pen and just send it to you and maybe that will save some time for the next time.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Hope springs eternal.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. So. Um, Lee and Alex. When is the next meeting? Yes.
Can I? Can I just um? Direct this to, to Evans uh in terms of what we, we talked about with having the, having Jack run that analysis for the quarter? If we can get that before the next meeting, so we can, we can take a look at that. If that's something you're willing to do and also just to. Um, make sure we have the, the full set of um current site plans, so we can look at that drain, that drainage issue.
Sure. Are we, are we continuing this, Mr. Chairman? Are we continuing this to the hearing that's two weeks from now?
I'm, that's what I was asking. Newman and Alex about the next hearing in the time.
We can do that. I mean, I think the question, we can continue to the nineteenth, it's at seven forty-five. I think the question is, Evans, how quickly can you get John this information? So that he's got sufficient time to look at it. Because, you know, effectively what we're talking about here is, is it has to be in an agenda package on the Thursday before that meeting. So we need your information from your team um sometime early next week, so that John has time to review it and turn it around. Is that doable on your end?
Well, so my answer is um. I, the short answer is I don't know. I guess I have to speak to Mr. Gillen about that and, and understand how long it would take him to do this.
Evans, my answer is going to be. That we are continuing this meeting until the nineteenth at seven forty-five. And if these materials are not presented in time. To present in the package. Then we're going to discuss other issues because there are still other issues to discuss. And we'll get to that when, when the timing works out, then we can get to it. Um, you know. We're, we're, I don't even know that we're going to be able to close on the nineteenth, the way things are going. It, it's, this is, this has turned into a very slow process. And I'm sorry that I blew up at you, but this is turning into a very slow process.
Well, I guess I'd just like to say publicly that. I know that I can let my advocacy sort of get the better of me sometimes. And so if, if, if I am coming across as sort of. Always having to interrupt and have the last word, I apologize if, you know, the perception is that I'm slowing the process down.
Thank you. I, I accept your apology and I hope you accept mine.
I do.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to continue the hearing to uh October nineteenth at seven forty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Adam Block.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We'll continue. Um, I want to, all of those other attendees who have had their hands raised. Um, I apologize that we couldn't get to you. I hope that you can remember what you want to say. Dried it down, come back on the nineteenth. Hopefully we'll get to you. And um. We'll be able to get your comments in. And um, we are reading the emails. If you want to send emails with your comments, please feel free to do that. Emails, letters. Um, work to a thousand pages. So if we wind up with twelve hundred pages of fourteen hundred pages, so be it. This board will do its job and will consider everything that is being presented to us. So.
And I want to comment that our staff has been very good at. Uh, making it clear to us that this is, these are new comments to be added to the comments you received on such and such a day. To create a list of all comments and uh memos that have come to us over the, the course of this, of this project. That's been very helpful.
Okay. Thank you all and um. This board has some other business to continue with. I gotta find my agenda.
Take care all. I'm signing off. Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
Very much. The next item is uh Mr. Chair, the um request to extend the temporary occupancy permit. Uh, for the property located at fourteen zero seven Central Avenue. Uh, in Needham, uh by the town of Needham, the Jack Cogswell Building.
Thank you, Adam. Lee, do you want to uh? Listen on that?
Um, well, yes, this is a problem with the land court um and their, their ability to get a consolidation plan through the land court. Um, and it might, it might turn out to be the case that. Um, the, the planning board may need to reconsider this requirement under its, under its decision. Um, the court um, um, was, was requesting a document be, be presented to it before it was willing to sign off on the land court plan. This document can't be found anywhere. Um, and so it's just kind of delaying the whole process. So. I'll speak with Chris Heap on next steps and get back to you. But in the interim, um, we should extend the occupancy permit out through January twenty-eighth.
Okay, I note that uh Natasha Espada has joined us. Is back, so we're back to full strength. Um, do I have a motion to extend the temporary occupancy permit?
So move.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second by Marty and Adam.
Oh, second, yeah.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Spatter, I went out of order. Mrs. Spatter?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay, add large appointment to the housing plan working group. So I guess that's um. Jean and Natasha will be presenting on this.
Yes.
Just involved in, in the um, in the, in the interviewing process.
Yes, and Marty was also involved.
I was.
Yes, I, I neglected to get the uh resumes in front of me again. I'd have to go to my, my file cabinet and get them. But let me report um that we um. Uh, Marty um joined me and Natasha, as it turned out, could not make it for the interviews of, of four candidates.
But I, but I watched it, Jean, I watched it um, on video.
Yes, and, yes. And, and the four candidates were those we had narrowed it down to at our last meeting. Um, Amanda Berman. Holly. No, um.
Rhonda Spector.
Rhonda.
Yeah, Oscar Mertz and Emily Cooper.
Emily Cooper is the name I was struggling with, yes. Uh, so those four we interviewed. And uh. We, you know, Natasha and I are serving as co-chairs of this committee. And we agree that um the best candidates for this committee are Rhonda Spector and Oscar Mertz. Um, and uh if you looked at their resumes, you will see the amazing experience that Rhonda Spector brings. Um, and Oscar Mertz is a person who's been active in the town recently. I've worked with him. Uh, I think he'd be a very good committee member. He is an architect. Uh, he has done many, both development projects and uh master plan projects. Not only in Massachusetts, but in other parts of the country. And I think he brings a lot as well. Um, Holly Clark, I keep saying Holly Clark and I'm talking about Emily Cooper. She has, she has very good experience, particularly in addressing homelessness, uh housing for the disabled. And that's uh very important, but I think our study is, is, is broader. And she was so gracious uh to kind of recognize that. We might choose one of the other people, but that she'd be glad to participate and give her input on uh coming from her experience. And um, Amanda Berman uh brings very much the same skills that our own staff person, Karen Soonarborg, bring. And uh we thought it might be somewhat duplicative and create some confusion as to, you know, who's, who's the staff and who's, who's, who's in charge here. Uh, was the main thing. But the, but they. Really, it's that uh I very much look forward to uh to working with, with Rhonda and Oscar on this committee. And um, I think Nat- Natasha, I don't mean to speak for you. You might wish to add your own comments there.
No, I, I agree with Jean. I agree with what you're saying, so. Um, we, we had a lot of great candidates. We narrowed it down to, to five and now um we're so lucky. So I, we, we do hope that the other candidates. Um, run for, you know, other positions and consider, because um. Some of them are not involved right now and, and it would be great for the town to be able to um, for them to. To contribute to the town in different ways.
Oh, and we had five, but um a man who previously had served in the Housing Authority. Uh, sent us an email saying he didn't think he could manage it with his work right now.
Andrew Cohen.
So, Mr. Cohen, so we didn't interview him.
Marty, Marty, I'm curious what your thoughts are on the candidates and the interviews.
Quite the same. Um, Rhonda Spector, I'm all in favor. By the way, all four of them, all four of them would have been great. And I mean that. They were really very impressive. But for this particular committee, I thought Rhonda would, was a very good fit. Uh, I questioned whether Oscar, who seems like he's really qualified to do a lot of things, whether he might not just be. Duplicating skills that Natasha already brings. I thought that the uh, that was probably the duplication we didn't need. Uh, I. I was very impressed with Amanda Berman. I would have taken her in a heartbeat. But I guess Jean and Amanda, uh Jean and Natasha think that uh. You know, Karen Soonarborg can fill one of the roles that Amanda might have filled, but. Amanda wasn't looking to fill the role. She was just saying. That she thought it was important that there be structure and there's somebody involved. She wasn't campaigning for it or anything. I, I didn't read it that way at all. So um. I think she would have been great. But I, I'm fine with the two that they picked. I have no problem with it. Again, I was very impressed with all four of them.
Marty, I very much appreciate your participation. I, I would have felt awkward just having it be me. And that you were there and then, then Natasha watched the video afterwards. It's great.
So if we ever had an opportunity to have Emily Cooper or Amanda Berman active on some committee in this town, we would be very lucky.
I feel the same way.
That's heartening to hear and uh, and that's fantastic. Um. I. It's funny because so many of the, so many of the candidates, when I went through the resumes. Have similar experiences or professional background or skill sets. Uh, and that there is probably a decent amount of uh duplicative skills and experiences. So. You know, how do we arrive at that, you know, at, at deciding who among, I mean, it's pretty clear that Rhonda stands out to everybody. Uh, and then um. Uh. And, you know, the, the co-chairs of this committee are proposing, you know, Oscar in the second chair. Uh, and Marty, having had gone through the interview, um. And his comments are interesting about, about Amanda. I don't know if there's further discussion about. Which area of duplicative skill sets? Uh, because it, it didn't sound as though from what Marty was saying that Amanda was advocating. That she was, that, that as a resident of Needham, that she was bringing. Uh, skill set or knowledge that may be similar, but also perhaps a different voice than what. Uh, uh, Ms. Soonanborg was, was contributing as a staff function. So I see that those two distinct. As, as, as a distinction and yet, uh, you know, if we're, if you do want to make a motion.
I was gonna ask a question whether this requires. Uh, our vote or whether this is just a decision for Jean and Natasha to make and we've heard the report.
I think, I think it requires your, a vote from you for the two.
It's an appointment to a committee, I think we, we should vote on it, yes. So um. I move that we uh appoint. Ro- Rhonda. Spector and Oscar Mertz to be our community members of the um. Housing Plan. Work Group.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Spatter?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
I'm fine with it, yep.
Ms. McKnight?
Aye.
I'll make it unanimous. Very good. Congratulations. Let's get this thing moving.
Yes, we have a meeting planned in a couple of weeks. Um, another, uh, uh, is it all right, Lee, if I discuss whether we should uh seek somebody from the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
I, I've been thinking that we're. And I was thinking back and I, I didn't have the list in front of me and then when I referred to it, I said. Oh, no, we don't have somebody from the zoning board of appeals. And I think that's very important. Um, because uh particularly of the role that the zoning board of appeals plays in the forty B process. If we're to uh have any so-called friendly forty Bs. Uh, you know, the select board of the gatekeepers and if the select board say, yes, we, we like this uh idea. Then it goes, of course, to the zoning board of appeals for the kind of detailed review that we give to our projects and site plans. And then also, um, I expect that uh accessory dwelling units will not be the, not be a big focus of this committee, but certainly it will be discussed. And they've also had the history of, of dealing with accessory dwelling units. And, you know, I, I, I just feel that it would be good to have somebody from the zoning board of appeals. Um, and also, Lee, has anyone come forward yet from Parks and Recreation?
No one's come forward from Parks and Rec and I think it's quite possible we're not going to have a representative from that committee.
I think we should make the decision.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing because we're too, that committee is too big already. That's my feeling.
Well, I think if we make a decision that will sort of say to Parks and Rec, um, we, we decided we. We don't feel we need a member from Park and Rec. So they know that it's not pending with them anymore.
Okay.
And, and instead. Uh, ask the zoning board of appeals if, if they, that board will appoint someone. Do others agree?
I, I just fear a very large committee. That, that's, that's all.
How many members do you have now? I mean, it is a large committee.
It will be thirteen. Um, but it's, if Park and, if, if Park and Rec, if we don't have Park and Rec, we substitute zoning board of appeals, it's still thirteen.
Well. I think we definitely have to tell Park and Rec. But thanks, but no thanks. I mean, you, you know, they should have gotten back to us by now.
No, and, and they, they're, they, the staff person communicated with their board. There was no, there was no board member that wanted to take it on, as I understood it.
Fine, and they're not interested.
And they're not interested. So I think substituting the ZBA makes all the sense in the world.
Okay. That's fine. Ask the ZBA to appoint somebody. And uh, yeah, let's get this committee moving.
Yes. Right.
Has everybody else been appointed?
Yes, everything, everything is done and we have a, we have a meeting date, um, October twenty-second, I think.
Great. Okay.
Okay, do we need to vote on the? Okay, do we need to vote on the, on the committee and?
The Red Sox now winning six to one?
Yeah.
The eighth inning.
Yep, I'm following it.
Um, okay. Do we need, do we need to vote on the constitution of the committee and, and, and bring in the ZBA and eliminate?
I think we just, I think we just decided to bring in the ZBA.
Yes, just consensus, okay.
You know, that's, you know, say thanks, but no thanks to Park and Rec. And the other boards are all, you know, we, we don't have a say in that, we asked them to appoint somebody, which they did.
And we're all set with them.
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you all.
Yep, so um, we have a meeting with the select board on uh, next Tuesday night. And they want to discuss um, zoning articles. We already discussed um, Chestnut Street. And are there three zoning articles for us to discuss with the?
No, there's two zoning articles, you voted on outdoor dining earlier, so we, and we did Chestnut Street. I think the other one they want to talk to you about is that resolution on ADUs. The citizens petition on this.
So have you all had a chance to, to look at that and?
I did, that's, is that, that's the citizens petition, I think, from Oscar Mertz, right, who's also on the committee?
He was the organizer of the petition, yes.
It seems, as written, it seems kind of strangely vague. You know, um, I'm not quite sure what to make of it, the way it's written. But I'm gonna look at it again.
Well, yeah, um, the, the board is going to look to us on Tuesday, the select board is gonna look to us on Tuesday night for our formal opinion on it.
By the way, before I forget, later on this month, I think the AARP is doing a whole program about ADUs.
Oh, that'll be interesting.
I zoom, so you might check it out.
All right, I'll bring this up now, maybe I should have brought it up before when we were discussing Oscar's appointment. But I am, I'm a little concerned about Oscar's appointment because he seems to be to some extent, he seems to be a one-issue candidate here. And um, I hope he broadens his perspective when he's on, when he's on this board, because this, this board is, is more than just ADUs, which he seems to be totally focused in on. Um, and it's not just affordable housing, it's our housing plan for the entire town. Um, and, and Oscar seems to be focused in on those two items and hopefully, hopefully he'll broaden his perspective.
For what it's worth, Paul, let me just say, if you watched the interview we had with him, I don't think you'd have that impression. I don't think he's that narrow. I, I don't know, what do you think Natasha and Jean?
I agree, Marty.
Okay, thank you.
He has a lot of different experiences, this is just something that he's, you know, bringing up.
I am specifically referred to the ADUs as well, that's just a small issue.
Yeah, well, if it's such a small issue, why is he bringing it to town meeting? I'm, I am totally against this provision for town meeting. Number one, he is somewhat focused on ADUs and he says in it himself that it will add three units. We have to go through all this for, to add three units?
Yeah.
You know, that's concern number one. Concern number two is um, we've only had our ADU in place for two years. Give it a chance to work out, it's too soon to revisit it. I, you know, three or four years or five years, then we, then, then we revisit it, we see how it's working. In terms of the question of allowing people to rent their ADUs to have supplemental income, we discussed that, we debated it. The board voted against it, now granted, there are members of the board, there were members of the board then who aren't on the board now. Ted Owens and Liz Grimes were on the board then and now we have Adam and Natasha. So maybe the vote would be different now, but still, it's only been two years. We shouldn't be, you, you, you know, it's, it's like what goes on in Washington sometimes, you, you know, you, you have a small change and so you have an opportunity to undo what the last person did. Let's, let's give it a chance.
But isn't that an argument against the petition, not necessarily an argument against him being on?
I'm making my arguments against the petition.
I mean.
I mean, you started this by saying, you know, you have second thoughts about his appointment.
No, 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 yeah, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm making the arguments against the petition. Number one, he's only looking at, he's, he's admitting that it only adds three units, why? For three units, I don't want to go through this whole process with town meeting. Two, um, uh, it's, it's only been two, two years, I, I want what we voted to have a chance to work itself out. And um, number three was, we now have this committee that Oscar's gonna be on, which is um, which has this as part of its charge. And so the planning board is going forward with looking at all of these issues, including the ADUs, including possibly revising the ADUs. And let that process work out, we don't need a town meeting telling the select board to sit on our necks.
Well, one, one strategy could be just to recommend that the article be referred back for the, for the last reason that you give, which is that.
You refer it back, you have to report back at the next town meeting, I want.
But the committee, but they.
I want to reject it. I want to recommend to town meeting that they vote no.
Yes, what I say is uh, a year ago, and it, it came out of the everybody being very, very upset about the uh, the police um, action with George Foreman.
Floyd.
Floyd.
Floyd, George Floyd, um, a new mo- a new, a movement arose. And that movement caused itself equal justice Needham. At, at the same time, the town established Nuari, Needham United Against Racial Injustice. And of re- maybe I've got the name wrong, it's Nuari. And there is a movement in town. And I think what Oscar is involved, Oscar is involved in this group. And he has a tendency, he is a leader. And so when everybody wanted to say, we have to re-study ADUs, he responded to that by putting together the petition. And I, I think that's what's changed, there, there's a real, a real movement. There's a real, a lot of energy that's in the town right now. And um, you know, you may recall the, the um, Board of Health and the um, Council on Aging did want, you know, gee, I think three or four years ago, um, to enable seniors to be able to rent units in their home, to help them with the cost of homeownership. And we, that wasn't what town meeting voted, uh, that isn't what we presented. Um, but you know, I think there's a lot of energy now in a different direction and we, I, I think the idea to say we will not study this. Uh, I don't know, it's just not the right answer for the time.
It's part of, it's part of your committee to study it. ADU is definitely part of what your committee is doing.
Mm-hmm. I wonder if there's some way we could respond uh, by saying that um, you know, we hear you. That's what, we will be including this as part of our study. It's not the main focus, but certainly going to be part of the study.
Yeah, but we're definitely in the presentation to town meeting and, and the presentation to the select board on Tuesday. I would definitely say that, I mean, that was my third point.
I know.
Is that this is, you know, this is part of what this, this committee is going to be studying and there's no reason to separate it out for three units. For three extra units.
And such a vague thing. I mean, it's, I don't know if you've read it, but it's
Yeah, no.
Clear what it's, what it means and what it says, so, to me. Anyway. Come on, it's late.
So, okay. Do we want to address these minutes, is that next?
Wait, no, wait, 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 we have to make a decision about what we're going to say to the select board on Tuesday night about this citizens petition, I presented my view. I've got four other people here to reach a consensus as to what we're gonna tell the select board on Tuesday. Yes, I.
My perspective is that uh, the, the purpose of the committee is to explore um, a wide range of options to increase housing, particularly affordable housing, you know, in town. And that the concept of ADU or, or making a part, basically opening up the whole of Needham to apartment districts is gonna be studied automatically by, you know, by the, by that committee, so on that basis, I think, given as Marty has talked about it being very vague and the outcome having such a minor impact on a major problem. I think that it, it does, I would support. I'm gonna take a step back. I, um, given the hour though, I, I've, I'm, I, there's a, I've laud, I found it. I've laud the effort and the concept, the goal that Oscar is trying, that, and Jean, you are also advocating for. And yet I think it's better here to be part of the broader committee's work. And that may be one of the outcomes that the committee recommends. And yet.
Especially with Oscar on the committee.
Of course, so I, so I would, so on that basis, I would, I would propose that we uh, reject the specific citizens petition. And when, and that we would speak to it on, at the town meeting. Uh, that this, that the concept would be part of a broader proposal that will be studied by the committee as a whole.
Yeah.
Um, if I could respond to that, I, I think a more gent- a gentle way of handling this is to suggest a motion to refer to the planning board for, for the study, because that's exactly what we're proposing to do. Uh, so why not just do that and that, that may be less divisive?
Because Jean, on a motion to refer, we have to go back to town meeting probably in May and give a report on what we've done.
What's wrong with that?
Because your work's not gonna be done by then, your committee is working.
It is.
You're gonna have something ready for, for May town meeting?
That is our goal, is it not, Lee?
Well, I don't know, Jean, that we're gonna have any zoning articles or anything like that for town meeting, I think, I think, I think we're probably gonna have the, the, the report close to done with this, with this recommendations, but the recommendations are gonna be what, what our next steps to implement. So I don't know that there's gonna be, you know, a draft article, I mean, I know we talked about that. Originally, we talked about the idea of, you know, double tracking inclusionary zoning. I think when we were doing the interviews, I remember Amanda raising a very, I thought, um, important point, she said, you know, then you need to complete the needs analysis, so you know what the problems and issues are, and then you develop the policies. Um, and the policies are basically gonna articulate what the next steps are, so it's modifying maybe the ADU, it's looking at zoning changes, it's looking at a corridor study. So I think that if we get through the needs and the assessment and we get through the articulation and agreement on what the policy goals are and objectives and strategies, that the next step for that is to, is to, it's to pick out what can be implemented and we're probably, I think realistically, looking at the fall before there's anything that's tangible that's presented to town meeting in terms of um, a, a component that's coming out of that plan.
Um, but we're, right, it was unrealistic to think that we'll actually have zoning bylaw amendments to present at the two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting, I kind of thought that. Um, but it, but, but I did think that the study would be far enough along uh, by that time, that it would certainly be possible to make a report to town meeting.
Oh, yes, absolutely, I think the study will be, that will, will be at that point and these analysis will have, have been done, we will have done our community meetings, we will have looked at different strategies, we would have developed, yeah, yes, yes, that will be done. Yeah, that piece will be done, but the actual zoning or implementation of that, no.
What's wrong with the report, all right, I'll be quiet now.
Lee, uh, Lee, I'm just curious, so you're saying that we, in six meetings of this committee of thirteen people, you're gonna have the full policy developed?
I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have the needs assessment done, the needs assessment, the objective for that is to have that done by the beginning of January. Um, and then I think it's gonna be to look at possible strategies and the report maybe won't be done, but certainly our strategies identified that the town might want to consider.
So the need, so the needs assessment I can understand is done, you know, into January.
Yeah, that's, because that's, that's really basically the demographics. Um, I mean, there's some problems now with some of the census data coming out and we want to use the most current census data, but yes, the needs analysis, I think the, the plan was to present the needs analysis to the committee the first of January.
So then if, you know, government being government and people being people, if it's bumped into the end of January, you think within a couple of months from there, you would have a full policy framework?
Maybe not a full policy framework, but um, you cert- you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, Karen Sinnerberg told me nine months, but um, and that was a fast track process.
And, you know, and we're, the committee is not really gonna get going until the middle of, middle of October, I mean, I'm, I just, I, I don't mind.
It's not even gonna start till the middle of October.
Right, so I, I, I can understand if the, if the planning board is fine to submit a report at, in May. Uh, you know, that's really an incomplete report. That's fine, but if it wants to present something that has more substance to it, perhaps by the October twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Right.
Then it sounds like, Paul, what you're suggesting is that we reject the current, um, I don't mean to sound harsh, I, I'm not rejecting Oscar, I'm not rejecting, you know, the, the goal and the effort.
Vote against.
You know, that we've.
Just the town meeting voting, and I just want to say, Jean, if your committee is ready for May to say we're comfortable, we're ready to go forward to amend the ADUs, here are our suggestions to have an amended for the ADU articles at the May town meeting as an interim measure. Right. We'll discuss it, we'll go forward with it. Or even if it, you know, of course, we have to go through with, with, with the public hearing process and all that. But you know, if, 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 if that's where your committee wants to go, that's fine, but it's all part of, I just want it to be part of your committee. Instead of having it as a standalone resolution to say, do something about the ADUs. It has to be part of the broader picture.
The only, the only question that I have is, is there anything that, because that, that would be a year, you know, from now or sooner, but mostly like, most likely a year, is there anything that we're missing out by waiting for that long to, to, to submit something on the ADUs, is my only question.
According to Oscar Mertz, three units.
But there aren't any incentives from the state or any grants or anything that we would be missing out if we, if we didn't do it right now, okay?
Not for ADUs that I'm aware of.
Can I, can I move that we uh, that we vote against the uh, if the citizens, uh, we vote against the citizens petition?
Sure.
I move.
Second.
For a discussion? Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mrs. Spata?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mrs. McKnight?
Nay.
And I vote aye, four to one.
So, so we, I'd like to propose, Mr. Chair, that we make a decision or comment or not on the ZBA and then defer our other business unless it's urgent, just given the fact that it's 11:30. My blood sugar levels about is borderline. I'm about to crash, so I need to eat imminent.
Yeah, I, I.
I, I'd like to do a couple, if we could just do a couple things. Can we agree on what, who, the two planning board members that are going to present the zoning articles for town, for town meeting? Because we're, it's going to be a similar format to what we had done before. You're going to record a presentation. So I need a volunteer to do the outdoor dining and a volunteer to do the Chestnut Street Business District.
I'll do, I can do the, oh wait, how much time do we have left? When is town meeting? The 25th?
I, yes, I believe that's right.
So I- I can volunteer, I guess, for the outdoor seating.
Yeah, okay, that's great. Who wants to do the other one?
You don't want me for that?
I think Marty does. I can tell.
I think Natasha and I have our work cut out for us.
I know. I can't volunteer for anything else right this second.
I can't do that one.
Paul?
I'm sorry, which one did Adam just take?
Outdoor dining.
The outdoor dining, you're going to-
Yeah, no, no, no. I'll do Chestnut Street.
Yeah, boy, all right.
But, but I thought, is this going to be in town hall?
It's going to be in town hall. Um. Pardon me?
I said, that's going to be interesting. Are we all going to have to wear masks?
I'm not going. I'll be available by phone.
I'm not going either. I will be available by phone.
Well, yeah, a meeting member, Marty. Well, that's, yeah, but we, but we have zoning articles. Yeah, I, I find it interesting that we're, that we're doing it indoors.
I'm surprised that if we're doing it indoors, that we have to do a, you know, a video presentation, but I guess it's just expedite the time.
I think it's to expedite the meeting. And, and tomorrow, you know, we're going to the, to the finance committee. They're running a hybrid meeting. So Adam and Paul, I'm going to be remote. I don't, I don't know how you are planning to participate.
My plan right now is to go to town hall.
Okay.
I would intend to do the same.
Okay, and, and I'll, and then I'll be there.
I, I've even already gotten my booster shot, so I'm feeling invincible.
Okay, can I, can we, can we, can we do the shuttle service yet tonight?
I, I can't.
Okay.
What's to do? What is to do?
I need some direction on how, you know, I've, since our last meeting, I've had, we've, we've had some correspondence with the 128 Business Council on the shuttle service and in the need basically to have all the businesses participating by the beginning of the year. I think, you know, we met with Mr. Schalager from Bull Finch a couple of weeks ago. And he had indicated he was no longer, he was, he did not want to join the shuttle service currently. His employee load was low, and he essentially wanted to provide Uber services for those employees that needed it. And I was directed to work with him and to contact the 128 Business Council on what their, how their service was running and how this would impact their service. And they wrote you an email, which basically indicates that all the other folks are part who are were required under their permits through the planning board to participate in the shuttle service. We're in fact providing, we're, we're in fact taking part in that shuttle service. And that the 128 Business Council was actually proposing to add back its second van at the beginning of the year. And so their ask to the planning board was that the Bull Finch be required to re-join. I don't think the planning board can dictate what kind of, what shuttle service Bull Finch provides. But it might be appropriate for the planning board to decide that, that a shuttle service does need to be provided consistent with the permits for all the other businesses in, in the park.
I move that we direct the land, the, the, the landlord.
Bull Finch Group.
Bull Finch Group to continue its compliance with its special permit.
And to provide shuttle service.
To provide, as, as provided for therein, effective immediately.
Why, why immediately?
Because they've, they've been out of this, they pulled out of this thing for about 18 months.
Right.
Other businesses in that, in that-
Oh, I know, but Monica says they can start January 1.
There's a certain amount of planning involved.
Wait, 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 please. There are a couple of things. One, Monica has said that the shuttle is in immediate jeopardy. If Bull Finch, if Bull Finch is, continues to not participate, the shuttle service is in immediate jeopardy. This whole idea that they're, they've got enough capacity to come back in January is great, but that's on the backs of the other law, law-abiding permit holders. And if we disel, and if we allow another permit holder to not, to not be in compliance, then we're inviting others and we're, and we're muting the purpose of, of, of our conditions.
I understand, but why did Monica then say they can start participating again in January 1? Seems inconsistent.
I think what the inconsistency is, is that Monica's saying that she thinks there's enough demand for another service, that enough employees by January will be coming back into the tenant employers of the tenant space, which is different than what Bull Finch is saying.
I also don't like the idea that he's trying to get around it by doing Uber and Lyft, which is like one person, one car, which is what we're trying to avoid here to begin with. If you want, you know, we had a discussion about this at, at our chair vice chair meeting. We, as Lee said, we cannot direct him that he has to do the service through the, the 128 Business Council, if that's what it's called. But we don't have that requirement for the other property owners either. They just have a requirement that they have to have a shuttle service. He has a requirement that he has to have a shuttle service. The others are all complying, and he's not. And the purpose of the shuttle service is to get cars off the road and get people using public transportation. And he's flaunting that. And if we let him get away with it, why, why shouldn't Trip, why shouldn't TripAdvisor switch also and go to Uber?
Look, all of you, show you understand. I completely understand, and I completely agree. I don't like him just saying, I'm not going to participate. I, I think it's despicable, frankly. What I don't understand is why Monica is saying in the same breath, they can't do this, they shouldn't do it, puts everybody in jeopardy. They can start January 1. I, that I don't understand. If you want to have them start immediately, that's fine. But it's not what Monica really suggested.
Yeah.
That's my only question.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too.
So if, Lee, am I correct that, that Monica's, Monica's saying that there, so the, the difference, I think, Marty, is that she is recognizing enough demand to, to project a second shuttle coming back in line in January, but they can't do it, and they can't do the existing shuttle if, if, if Bull Finch pulls out or anyone else pulls out for that matter. And then-
She, I talked to her, and she told me that her goal was to have them back in, in paying effective January the first.
Who have, have who? Bull Finch?
Have Bull Finch back in and paying effective January of 2020.
I remove my votes and I move that we, that we direct, that we direct the Bull Finch Group to return in compliance effective January 1, 2022.
Not later than, how about that?
Not later than, yeah, not later than January.
I, I, I accept the, the change.
Thank you. I second the motion.
Any further discussion? I'm going to make further discussion. We're giving him a break that nobody else has asked for. I feel that he, he doesn't deserve the break. I did my, I did some homework before the chair vice chair meeting. The Bull Finch Group is a big organization. They've got multiple, multiple properties. They can afford this service. That's number one. Number two, num, number two, if I may, I have no sympathy for the 128 Business Council. If you Google them, they are a large organization. They provide this 128 service. It's not just this small Newton Needham area. They're doing this out of air life. They're doing this out of somewhere else. They've got plenty of money. They're a nonprofit organization. Their 990s are available. They had seven-figure, well, the last 990 is 2019. Granted, it, it was, you know, pre-COVID, but still, they had more than a million dollars of revenue in 2019. They're not some small organization. So I feel that we shouldn't, I'm going to vote no, because I feel that we shouldn't allow him to not comply with his requirements. As I said to Adam and Lee, if he wants to go out and buy a van and provide the shuttle service himself, he's free to do that. He doesn't have to use the 128 Business Council. We can't, we can't force him to use the 128 Business Council. But we can force him to, to comply with our special permit, which is what I want to vote.
I have no objection to that either, Paul.
Neither do I.
The only reason I was asking about why does Monica say January 1, is it didn't make any sense to me.
I'm not concerned about Monica.
If you want it, yeah. I withdraw. Do it immediately, that's fine with me.
So, okay, so where, where have you guys landed? I'm a little confused.
I withdraw my motion. Oh, no, we have to vote the motion.
No.
I meant, I meant my motion. I meant my motion to, to require Bull Finch to return to compliance effective November 1.
Good.
Okay, second.
Any further discussion? Hearing nine, Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mrs. Spata?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi, I just want to be clear. When you say return to compliance, is a particular paragraph?
Yes.
Reference there. I think it's 3.15 or something, or whatever it is, should be in. Yes, I agree, yes.
Thank you.
McKnight?
Yes.
It's unanimous. I vote yes.
Okay.
We'll do minutes next time.
I move.
Let's wait.
Yeah.
I have no comment on the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, I, I move that we make no comment. Any discussion? Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mrs. Spata?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mrs. McKnight?
Hi.
I vote aye.
On the record, the final, 62 Red Sox.
Yay. They move a lot to lose to the Rays.
I moved to, I moved to adjourn.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
We, we have to vote it. Mr. Block?
Hi.
Mrs. Spata?
Hi.
Mr. Jacobs?
Hi.
Mrs. McKnight?
Hi.
It's unanimous, 5-0, we're adjourned.
Thank you, thank you, Lee. Thanks, everyone.
Good night all.